Good morning and welcome to City Hall. We will get started with the invocation and the Pledge of Allegiance. Jerry Kennel is the pastor at South Lindsay Baptist Church. I'll ask him to lead us in the invocation. Afterwards, I'll ask Councilman Pat Ryan to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. Would everyone please stand?
Father, first of all, I want to lift this body up to you, pray, Father, even in Solomon of old that prayed that, Father, you would give him wisdom to know how to rightly lead the people. I thank you for this body, their leadership in this great city. Pray, Father, that as the meeting progresses, everything be done decently and in order, and through it all, your will would be done. In Jesus' name, amen.
Amen. A pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. We're on item three of the council agenda as we call the meeting to order. We have a series of appointments. I'll look for a motion. Comments or questions on the series of appointments? All right, cast your votes. Passed unanimously. We're on to item four. It's the Journal of Council Proceedings. Item 4A is to receive the Journal of Council Proceedings for May 29th, and item 4B is to approve the Journal of Council Proceedings for both May 15th and the 22nd. Cast your votes. Journal passes unanimously, and item five is request for uncontested continuances.
Mayor, on page 14, under the consent docket, items 6A, O., 1, 2, 3, and 4, 6A, O., 1, 2, 3, and 4, we ask that that be deferred until July 3rd. And then on page 29, under item 8M1, item C, 2204 North Kelly, we ask that that be stricken. The owner has removed. Item D, 3921 South Shields, we ask that that be stricken. Owner has removed. Item E, 1921 Northwest 7th Street, we ask that that be stricken. Again, the owner has removed. On page, on item 8N1, B, 5520 North Bryant, we ask that that be stricken. The owner has secured. Item D, 2613 Drakestone, we ask that that be stricken. The owner has secured. Item H, 2008 North Indiana, we ask that that be stricken. The owner has secured. Item L, 2201 North Kate, we ask that that be stricken. The owner has secured. Moving to page 30, under item U, 4137 North Prospect, we ask that that be stricken. The owner has secured. Item V, 9720 North University, we ask that that be stricken. The owner has secured. Item double P, 1912 Northeast 25th Street, we ask that that be stricken. We're going to rework as a dilapidated structure. Item VB, 1407 Southwest 33rd Street, we ask that that be stricken. The owner has secured. And finally, item triple B, 2412 Southwest 43rd Street, we ask that that be stricken. Again, the owner has secured.
Any other requests for uncontested continuances? All right, we'll resume the council meeting convening as the Oklahoma City Municipal Facilities Authority. We have a motion in a second on the seven items of the MFA. Comments or questions here? All right, cast your votes. Passed unanimously. We'll adjourn the OC MFA convening as the Oklahoma City Public Property Authority. There are five items. Comments or questions about the PPA? Cast your votes. Passed unanimously. We'll adjourn the OC PPA convening as the Oklahoma City Environmental Assistance Trust. There are two items. Okay, we have a motion in a second on the EAT. Any comments or questions here? Let's cast your votes. Passed unanimously. Adjourn the OCEAT and reconvene the council meeting with the consent docket. A lengthy consent docket today. Are there any individual considerations?
Mayor, on item 6K5, that's an introduction on SPUD 672, and the final hearing has been set for July 3rd, and the applicant requests that the date be established for the final hearing of July 31st.
Okay, and that's the 6901 Northwest 63rd Street?
Yeah.
6K5.
That's correct.
Okay. All right. Any other comments or questions?
Well, no, we're just going to, we're modifying the date of the final hearing.
Your Honor, T is in Tom.
Okay.
U is in uniform. Z is in zebra. Alpha Bravo Point Four.
Okay.
And Mayor, I had a couple, 6P, 6Q, and 6AA.
All right, Pat, you want to get started with T?
T and U are sort of related, Your Honor. They're awards of paving contracts, and they're both awarded to Schwartz Construction Company, who's an excellent contractor. But Schwartz Construction Company is also working on another project now on May Avenue. And I was just concerned about the capability of Schwartz to do all these projects simultaneously and hopefully not sequentially because these projects need to be completed. And just concerned that, and I'm sure that the Public Works Department have looked into this, to make sure that the capability is there to do all these projects at the same time.
We'll make sure that we stay on them to make sure that they submit their schedules and they follow those schedules.
Because there've been some utility problems on the May Avenue project, and Schwartz has just gotten back on it after a long delay. And so he's essentially, we'll have three projects underway, and I just was concerned about that. On Z, we're talking about some energy-efficient audits extending the contract to do some additional work. And I wondered if anybody's come up with a payback on this investment, a significant investment, over $600,000 on just the contract, I mean, on the engineering estimates and the architectural work, and then over a million dollars on actual construction. And I wondered if we've done a calculation on the value of this work in terms of the payback on the investment we're making.
We almost always do that. I hope Jennifer could come in and maybe answer that question. Maybe she can work.
This one was a big project, though, with lots of dollars involved in it. And some of the things they're doing are not nebulous exactly, but there is some controversy about the overall effectiveness of some of these things. I just wanted to make sure that we delved into that.
Okay.
And on A, B4, I think that may be Ward 8 instead of Ward 1. Just a minor correction. Thank you, Your Honor.
All right. Meg, item P.
Thank you, Mayor. And Pete may chime in with me here on item P, but I just wanted to recognize that this is a funding agreement with Oklahoma County to work on the SHINE program. And I know we've talked about it quite a bit, but Commissioner O'Brien-Mon some time ago put together a program to help, and the acronym for SHINE is to start helping impacted neighborhoods everywhere, working on graffiti removal and trash removal. And I know also in that Councilman, Ricketts Award, a ton of work has been done, and I just wanted to recognize the ongoing partnership in funding.
And this is the second year we're doing that. The first year, we didn't get started right away because we had some issues to work through on getting it started up, but we're in it this fiscal year, and this will be the second full year.
Thank you. And then item 6Q, again, I just wanted to recognize the work of some of our departments here. This is a resolution that approves the update of our 10-year plan to create transitional and lasting housing solutions for the homeless. And item 6AA is referencing traffic synchronization, and I wanted to just ask the city manager if he could take a look at the traffic light synchronization on Broadway. As you're going north from about 4th Street, those lights, instead of being synchronized, seem to be completely out of sync.
We thought that the property owners wanted more time to be able to see the storefronts on Broadway, so we.
Exactly. With all those beautiful windows painted, it looks great.
Yeah, so if we need to rethink our strategy on that, we'd be happy to do that.
Perhaps during this week it's okay, but it seems to be completely out of whack. And I just wondered if somebody could take a look at that. Thank you, Mayor.
Okay. Any other comments or questions about the consent docket? All right, we have a motion in a second. Let's cast our votes. Passed unanimously. On to the concurrence docket.
Move it, Senator.
Any comments or questions on the concurrence? All right, cast your votes. Passed unanimously. On to item 8. These are items that require a separate vote. We start with a series of zoning cases. The first is in Ward 8 at 1400 Northwest 164th Street. It's currently a simplified planning and development. Would become a new spud.
Thank you, Your Honor. Owner's representative, David Box, is in the audience if there are any questions. This project is essentially a redo of an existing project that was approved some months ago on, as a mini storage facility. The ownership changed hands, and the new owners made some modifications to the original SPUD, and this reflects those. Is anybody signed up to speak on this one? Are there any questions concerning this particular application? Neighborhoods have not contacted me, and they were involved very much in the design of this because there were some current concerns about the building. I would move approval.
Second?
We have a motion and a second on vote on item 8A1. Cast your votes. Passed unanimously.
And, Your Honor, I'd like to ask for the emergency on this one also.
All right. We have a motion and the emergency. How about a second?
Second.
Cast your votes. The emergency passed unanimously. We're on item 8A2. It's a zoning case in Ward 8. The address is 4520 Old Farm Road. It's currently a C3 community commercial and a CUP 12 community unit planned district, and it would become a new simplified planning and development. And it's in Ward 8. Pat, we have one person that's signed up to speak.
Okay, why don't we hear from that individual and his comments? And the owner's representative is here so we could reply to any specific problems the owner has.
Okay.
This has been a very controversial project. The neighborhoods out there have made some very reasonable requests. The applicant, on the other hand, has been very accommodating, and so it's been difficult to decide which way to go on this one. But it, there's been a lot of work done on both sides, a lot of valid concerns raised by the citizens out there. They're very concerned, and they're very reasoned in their concern, so.
All right. Dr. James Guyer. Morning, Doctor. We will need your name and address for the record, please.
James Guyer. I live at 4701 Northwest 118th Street. Mayor Cornett, member of the council. I live in Rosedale Gardens, the 50-home addition built in 2001 that is separated from the soccer facility by a fence. The issue is more than beer. It's the negative impact on the whole Summerfield area. Soccer City has not given us a compelling reason to sell beer. They have said it would make them competitive with Let's Play Sports near West Reno Avenue. They've also described an emphasis on adult soccer. However, you don't have to be 21 to play soccer as an adult. The soccer facility is located right in the center of Summerfield. The only other building in the commercial area is originally the clubhouse for the builders and the residents. This commercial area is surrounded by 1,000 residences, houses, patio homes, condominiums, and apartments. All the residents pay dues or fees to one of the two homeowners associations, and some are obligated for assessments, the purpose of which is to keep up and improve the common areas, which include several private streets. In other words, all of the residents have a stake in the neighborhood. The annual budget for the Summerfield Community Association is $280,000. For the Rosedale Gardens Homeowners Association, it's $90,000. And all this is spent on common areas. The soccer facility and the office building do not pay any dues, fees, or assessments. Not only would SPUD 659 infringe on the rights and expectations of the residents, it would put us in a position of subsidizing a sports bar. Moreover, the soccer facility would have the only public bar in a four-square-mile residential area bounded by Memorial, Portland, Hefner, and MacArthur. Since 1975, the Declaration of Covenants, Conditions, and Restrictions of the Summerfield Community Association has declared the purpose of the document is enhancing and protecting the value, desirability, and attractiveness of the real property. According to the county assessor, the value of our home has gone up $25,000 since it was built in 2001. My wife and I have lived in Oklahoma City for 50 years. We have witnessed the transformation of the city and the transformation of our own section with the Mercy Health Center, patients' latings, public library, John Marshall High School, and the improvements in Buff Creek Park. All of our children graduated from the old John Marshall High School. We think that SPUD 659 would be a step backward. As you know, the land was originally, back in 1928, was purchased by E.K. Gaylord. The Gaylord-Gurnsey Farm was operated till 1974, when the development started for residences. Just on a light note, we just, we don't want to watch the transformation of the Gaylord-Gurnsey Farm area from milk to beer. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Guyer. Dennis, I mean, David, would you like to come up and have the rest of the story or the other side of the story?
Good morning, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. David Box, 522 Call Core Drive. As Councilman Ryan said, this is a case that has been controversial, and it's gone on for quite some time. When my client purchased the property, they recognized that they were in a unique area. You have a sports complex that sits in the middle of a neighborhood. But when they purchased the property, it was zoned straight C3. C3 zoning allows 57 uses, everything from convenience sales to large gas stations to everything under the sun in C3. So what they've done is they've come in now with a spud, and they have taken those 57 uses down to only 14. And those 14 uses are uses that are compatible with the neighborhood. It's spectator sports, indoor sports, Neighborhood Property Association, things like that. Now, this facility, when it was built, was built as a private tennis club. And as part of that tennis club, they served liquor. So this use at this facility is something that's been around for quite some time. It's not unique. In the area, you have golf courses that sell alcohol. You have several restaurants all over up and down Memorial. There are bars over on Hefner and Rockwell. There's a Henry Hudson. So you have these types of uses around. But I think what we've done is we've taken a bad situation for the neighborhood with a complex as big as this is, with straight C3 zoning allowed itself to, you could have had a mall. You could have had all kinds of really intense uses, and we've stripped that away to only 14 uses. And what we've asked for is an ABC1, but we've further limited that in our spud to only beer. We've taken away the ability to sell wine, and we've further limited to, we will not allow any beer to be sold until the completion of the last youth soccer game. One of the interesting things about this facility is the State Soccer Association actually offices out of here. And part of that, they have primarily adult leagues. The only time that youth games occur in the facility is during the cold months. In the warm months, the youth are outside, and like right now, it's 100% adult league. So, but with the concern that when there are children present, we can't sell alcohol until the last youth game is done. And so with that, we feel that we've taken a, well, it could have been a bad situation with that many uses, and taken it to something that's appropriate for the area, and will work. And with that, we're here to answer any questions.
I'm a little bit unclear. Why is the zoning necessary if it already had the alcohol allowance previously? Did it, did it go away at some point?
Yes, sir. Years ago, there wasn't an ABC overlay function, and so they were operating under a special permit. And if six months goes on without the alcohol being sold, the license has lapsed, and now it's all covered with ABC overlays. And so there was never an ABC overlay in place, and that's why we had to come in and zone it.
David, what was the use of this building before your client purchased it?
It was an indoor soccer facility at the time, and the issue with that, and I think a lot of the initial protests concerned that because the previous owners, it was a family-run business. And when I say family-run, it was dad was reffing, mom was working the concession stand, and kids were working the doors, and they had no control. People were drinking in the parking lots. People were sneaking alcohol in, so there was no control. Now that my client has taken over, they have off-duty police officers at the facility every single night. They have cameras throughout the facility, and so the monitoring process is a lot more. They have a police car parked out front every night, and the police stay there until the doors are locked, and they don't see the issues like the drinking and the things that were happening in the parking lot with the previous owner.
Are there any questions from the council members about this?
I got one more question, and maybe I haven't been there under this ownership. I've been there several times, but probably not in a year or so. And it just seemed to me like there was some deferred maintenance that had built up. Is the current owner putting money into this facility?
Absolutely. And I'll let, Kerry Schubert from Soccer City is here, and I'll let him.
I'd love to hear from him. Because, you know, this neighborhood, I understand, is left with this facility.
Sure.
It increases traffic. The parking lot may or may not be big enough. I mean, there's, there's issues here. But the neighborhood doesn't need to shut it up either. I mean, so they need a viable business in here. I mean, there's a, there's, I can understand why there's a lot of conversations going on on both sides of this equation. But I would like to hear about the deferred maintenance being addressed on behalf of the neighborhood, if that has happened.
It has, and just as a side note, I grew up and I actually played here. So when I walked in for the first time after they had taken it over, I was amazed. For those who've been in there, they completely gutted the entire front portion. They built new walls. That's where the State Soccer Association offices now. They completely renovated the entire facility. But I'll let, I'll let Kerry talk about all the things they've done.
Kerry Schubert, 4025 West Win Oak Street. We took over in August of last year, and we were closed for about four months. We did over half a million dollars in renovation. As Mr. Box said, we gutted the whole entire upstairs. We moved the concession stand, which was basically, you couldn't really use it, and put a brand-new concession stand downstairs. We redid the parking lot. We have professional landscaping that came in. We had off-duty police officers there every single night. We had advanced alarms come in and put 26 cameras inside the facility, outside the facility. The bathrooms are redone. The floors are redone, and the place, if you were there before, needed a lot of work. If you talk to any of the customers that played there before we took over, and now, it's night and day. And as Mr. Box said, the Oklahoma Soccer Association, which governs the soccer in Oklahoma, offices out of our building. They just started that three months ago because they're so impressed with what we've done in there, and they have an office in our building. That's what we've done to the facility. 80% of our revenue comes from adults. They play there 12 months a year. The youth only play a couple months a year. And our adults, the reason we apply for this license, that's what, they would like us to be able to serve it as they do in the indoor facility here in Oklahoma City. There's another facility in Oklahoma City as well. But that's what we've done as far as the improvements.
All right, thanks.
Are there any other questions? Yeah, David?
Yes, thank you. What's the schedule as far as the children's play at the facility versus the adults? What time do they cease playing and what time do the adults?
Well, November through 1st of March, the youth are done about 7:30 at night. March through November, they're not there at all. So what we've done is, you know, we wouldn't sell any alcohol beverages, which is only 3.2 beer, until the last youth game is over. If you've been in our facility, you come there tonight or tomorrow night, it's all adults. But, you know, we've gone an extra mile and said, we won't even serve it while the youth are there, while the games are going on, which is, like I said, only three and a half months out of the year. Saturdays, the games are over about 7, 7:30. But no matter what time, sometimes it changes according to the number of teams under the leagues, whether it's 8 o'clock, 9 o'clock, 10 o'clock, we won't serve it till the youth games are over with.
Okay, one more question, and Kenny, it may be something you could address. If you chose to allow people to bring their own beer, could you provide for that without selling it? I mean, is there a ordinance that would prevent people from bringing beer inside this if, if the owners provided for it?
I'd need to look at the ordinance, and Bob may know the answer to this, but I think the ABC1, it's just, we're sale and consumption on the premises.
That's correct. And can't serve after midnight with an ABC1, so it has to cease at that point.
But I think. I understand, but I'm just saying, like, can you bring beer to a park?
No, I believe they have to have a different zoning category for that.
Okay. I'm sorry.
I'd be glad to go look at the.
Well, that's okay.
Use it and see for sure what it says, but I believe it, it's just sale and consumption on the premises.
Yes, I didn't mean to.
The owner has control of other people bringing beer on the property, and I think David wants to say something about that.
Yeah, we're willing to put something in the spud that will not limit, or will not allow people to bring their own. We certainly don't want that. That was part of the problem with the last ownership.
Well, I would, I would, I would think that you would have the possibility of more problems if people brought their own beer and were drinking out in the parking lots.
That's what the situation is just now.
Yes.
Or it exists before the new ownership came in.
I understand. I think it does sound like the new owners are trying to control the environment much more than what it used to be.
That's true, and this group is, they're out of Tulsa, and they've been operating in Tulsa for 10 years, and they have a facility similar to this where they sell alcohol, and they, over the last 10 years, have been given several family-friendly awards in Tulsa. So it's a group that, this is their business, and they know how to do it, and they do a good job at it.
Is the decision to restrict it to beer, is that binding, or could that be changed in the future to a full bar with?
The, it's, they've limited their SPUD to just beer only, no wine. So an ABC1 allows 3.2 beer and 14% wine, and they've, they've eliminated the wine portion. If they wanted to come back for a restaurant and with mixed beverage, they'd have to rezone it.
And one of the things, Councilman Shadid, I think it was notable was, this application originally just called for a straight ABC1 zoning change. It was a tie vote at the Planning Commission, so we had a discussion with David and asked him if he would resubmit this as an SPUD with specific times that the alcohol could be sold and limiting just the 3.2 beer in response to some of the concerns of the neighborhood out there. And so the applicant, in my opinion, has gone the extra mile to accommodate at least some of the concerns, not all of them, some of the concerns of the adjacent property.
Can I ask, this is extraneous to the spud, but one of Dr. Guyer's complaints was that they're spending hundreds of thousands of dollars on common area maintenance and that this facility really isn't contributing to the upkeep. How would you respond to his?
Well, I think, and I would defer to the doctor, but I think there is a pool and clubhouse in the neighborhood, and I think a lot of the common area maintenance probably goes to that for the use and enjoyment of the residents that live there. And my clients and the people that utilize the soccer facility don't utilize the common areas that are enjoyed by the neighbors.
And on Councilman Greenwell's point, as Mr. Box said, you can put a, this is a spud, you can put a provision in there that says, no beer shall be brought on the premises except by the owner-operator of the facility.
I think the applicants agreed to do that.
We'd be happy to do that.
But we've got that part covered, at least to the extent that that will impact people who might do that sort of thing.
Larry?
Yeah, just, I was going to mention this before Dr. Shadid did, but the soccer facility is not a member of the homeowners association, and so they are contributing nothing to it. Would the homeowners association be amenable, should the owner of the soccer facility make a contribution to help up the common areas if there are some common areas out there that are not just specifically for the residents' use?
Sure, they'd absolutely be happy to sit down and visit with them. But they've also offered the residents that they can use their facility to have their neighborhood association meetings and things like that. So the Soccer City folks, they want to be good neighbors, and they want to open their arms and have a good working relationship with the neighborhood.
Because as I understand it, the soccer facility will continue to operate whether we approve this SPUD or not. It is there, and they can operate there under the current conditions.
Correct. If this SPUD was not approved. Correct. If this S-P-U-D was not approved, what would happen? It would go back to just the straight C-3, and it would keep going. So they already have the ability to do what they want. This just gets them the alcohol and takes away about 30 something uses.
All right. I think Dr. Guy wanted to speak one more time.
I'd like to comment on some of the remarks of Mr. Box. Originally, this was a, he said that the tennis club that was there originally sold liquor. Well, it was a private club. It wasn't a public. He mentioned that there are bars on Hefner and Memorial and all the other streets. There's no bar between Portland and MacArthur on Hefner Road. There's no bar on the east side of MacArthur between Hefner and Memorial. There's one restaurant on the south side of Memorial between MacArthur and Portland that sells alcohol. So that's We're quite concerned about the restrictions that the Planning Department told us about. I have already submitted those. It says, no beer shall be sold until the completion of the last soccer game any night. And what if there aren't any youth soccer games? How early are they going to start serving? And they say that beer can be consumed by spectators in the stands while they're watching the soccer games. Now, this isn't the Chesapeake Arena, it's not Bricktown. And they say that permission to sell 3.2 beer will stay with the land as long as it is a soccer facility, even with a change of ownership. And they say that the zoning allows beer sales until midnight. And the question that we submitted to them was, when will the lights in the parking lot be turned off? If you look at the diagram up here, they've talked about the possibility of extending their parking lot into the tennis courts, which back up through the houses in our addition, in Rosedale. So if the lights are on, the lights are in the backyard of those homes. And they're not being required to increase their property, or they're parking on their property. And the big concern of Summerfield Community Association, as opposed to Rosedale, is the parking situation with cars on their streets. One thing I haven't heard commented on is the fact that Soccer City's been advertising beer on their website since, at least since March. And they advertise pictures of beer with pizza and so forth. And as far as adult soccer, I've had two grandsons that played soccer there when they were in high school, because they were filling in for adults who couldn't make it to their team. The U.S. Adult Soccer Association has a special program to develop younger players, and there is another association, U.S. Club Soccer, that requires background checks for the coaches using younger players. So with that, I'll rest.
Right. Thank you, Dr. Guy. Pat?
Thank you, Your Honor. David, do you have anything else to say?
On the issue of parking, the area on the site plan marked as tennis courts, we're currently looking into adding some parking there to help alleviate part of the problem. There are no parking signs posted along Old Farm Road, and my client has taken an active role on telling their customers, you can't park there. And if someone does, and they alert them, they'll be happy to call and have them towed. So we recognize there's a problem, and what we're trying to find a way and meet site distances to turn that area marked as tennis courts into parking. And on the issue on the website with beer, that's their Tulsa facility currently sells alcohol, they sell beer, so I think those advertisements are geared towards the Tulsa facility and what they're currently doing.
How about the question about lighting?
The lighting, it's, part of it is security. It's a big, open space, and so if that was dark in the evening, I think that would cause a, some sort of safety concern. But whatever the code requires, what we'll do as far as...
Lighting will be shielded such that it doesn't interfere.
Fill over.
Yes.
But wouldn't you be allowed to expand the parking and put lighting for that parking in under the current C-3 that you have now?
Yes, sir.
David?
May I ask a question? Is there another indoor soccer facility in Oklahoma City?
Yes, sir. It's on Reno, and they sell beer as well.
Okay, so to be competitive, I guess, is part of the reasons why you're considering adding this feature.
Correct.
And as Mayor Cornet mentioned, I don't think you'd want to enter into a situation where economics forces this facility to close. Also, one more question. Should the neighbors surrounding this area feel like there's too much noise or activity out in the parking lot? They could contact the police, and if it continued on, it could be considered a public nuisance or something.
Potentially, depending on the severity of it, you could have a violation of the noise ordinance or disturbing the peace.
And the light ordinance as well. They've got some, there is recourse available.
Okay. Would you consider amending this to include a provision that no beer could be brought onto the premises, other than, or consumed, other than that purchased by the...
Absolutely.
Owner or...
They agree with that.
Okay.
They just, about five minutes ago, they...
Oh, no, I'm wondering if we should add that.
They will add it into the S-P-U-D document.
Yes, thank you.
We'll amend that and submit it to staff.
Okay.
Do you have a motion on that amendment?
Okay. Well, I move amended, the application be amended. Reflect no sales, no beer being brought on the premises.
Okay. By outside, maybe words, no, no customer may bring it. The only beer on premises shall be regulated by the owners of the facility.
Okay. All right, let's vote on the amendment first.
Okay.
All right. Cast your votes on the amendment. Passed unanimously.
Now comes the really difficult part, and it's something that I've wrestled with for several weeks now. This has been to the Planning Commission twice. The last time it went to Planning Commission, it hasn't really approved the document as it's been amended here, I mean, as it's been changed before this amendment. The amendment further tightens things up, so I think it's a step in the right direction. And despite the pleas from the neighborhood, I move for approval. And I think it's a better situation than existed before, so I have moved to approve it.
Okay. Cast your votes. Passed unanimously.
Thank you.
And, Your Honor, I would also like to ask for the emergency on this one, since it's been delayed such a long, long time.
All right.
With the emergency?
Cast your votes. Emergency passes as well.
Thank you very much, Your Honor. Thank you, David.
Round item 8A3. It's a zoning case in Ward 4 at 12801 Southeast 71st Street. It's currently an R-MH2 manufactured mobile park district, and it would become a new simplified planning development. Pete?
Is anyone here to speak on it? Are you the applicant? Is anyone here to speak in opposition to it? This is kind of an interesting area. To have RMH2 located in an area that is essentially rural, especially at a location as remote as this is, is unusual. And over the last 25 years, there's been a number of interesting developments in that. Do you, why don't you come up? Let me ask you a couple questions. Do you own the real estate there or you're building it? You know, for a long time, in order to get around certain zoning restrictions, the owners gave 99-year leases to people, and they built houses on property that's 99, has 99-year leases. But you own the property, you have a deed, not a lease, but a deed to the property.
The whole middle section and the outer sides, everybody owns their property, everything would be on Janet to the right of you, is owned by Jim and then Cook, and all that has a 99-year lease on it.
Yeah, I know. Well, I've noticed, I have noticed that the quality of what's happened in the, in the area has improved remarkably over the last few years. There's been a lot of nice homes built there, especially east along, I mean, excuse me, west along 74th. There's been some really nice, and there's some lots for sale down there that I think are still part of this. I'm going to move approval.
All right. Comments or questions on this item? We're voting on item 8A3. All right, cast your votes. Passed unanimously.
Thank you.
Item 8B is to vacate an easement in Ward 7. Skip, you okay with this?
Yes. This is to continue the development of a hotel and lodging for citizens who have children who are under medical treatment. And I believe there was an issue previously in reference to one of the easements, but has that been corrected, Bob?
Yes, it's, this is the, originally, this was requested to be closed, and it really needs to be vacated. And that's what we're doing here. So it's, those issues have all been resolved.
Okay, all right. I move that we pass.
All right, we're voting on item 8B. Cast your votes. Passed unanimously. Looks like they've asked for the emergency too, Skip.
I move the emergency.
Cast your votes. Passed unanimously. Item 8C is to vacate an easement in Ward 4. Pete?
I don't think there are any reason to object to this. I move approval.
All right. Cast your votes on item 8B. It passed unanimously. Pete, they've also requested the emergency.
Move the emergency.
All right. Emergency passes as well. Item 8D is a public hearing regarding the Business Improvement District in Capitol Hill. We have the main resolution and a companion item.
Is there anyone here that wants to speak in opposition to this?
There is one person who has signed up. Jerry Matthews?
Let's hear from him. We haven't done a lot of research on this, and...
Jerry, what needs your name and address?
Oh, I'm sorry. Jerry Matthews, 433 Southwest 51st Street, Oklahoma City, 73109. I'm here representing Capitol Hill United Methodist Church, and I'd like to speak to you, Mayor Cornet, and Pete White, and the rest of the council. We have been through something like this a few years back. Our pastor normally would be the one representing the church, and has in the past, so I'm not totally familiar with exactly what occurred. But my understanding has been that our church was given a, we didn't, we weren't actually included as an assessed building or property, because we're not a, we're not a business. And so we, in the past, have voluntarily donated to this improvement district, but we would prefer to remain without an actual assessment for the church, since it is not a business.
All right. Kenny, is all that correct? Is churches required to pay?
Not, no, you can exclude them from the assessment.
Okay.
Yes.
Is that typically done?
I'm sure staff can come in, I'm sure staff can come in and tell us what the status is on this church and this project.
Okay.
This church has been very, very active in the community there. In fact, they recently, after Oklahoma City Community College was searching for a place to locate, they provided space for the community college there. So...
Russell, can you answer the question? Is the church included in the assessment district?
I don't know if this one is, but traditionally, we have not included churches. They're a nonprofit agency. Are you sure that you have an assessment?
Well, we received a letter notifying us of a hearing, and while appearing, just to be sure.
Okay, they're notifying you of the hearing, but that does not mean that you're on the assessment roll.
Okay, well, so am I...
They're just notifying you because you're within the perimeter of the district.
Am I clear then that our church is not going to be assessed?
No, you will not be assessed.
Thank you.
Okay. Thanks, Jerry. Yeah, Larry?
Yeah, if you read, Russell, if you read the, this thing that was given to us, it shows the church's property is assessment value zero.
Correct.
Pete, you ready to go?
Yeah, no, yes, I am. I move approval.
All right. We're voting to move forward on the approval of the Capitol Hill Business Improvement District. Any other comments or questions on this item? All right, cast your votes. So item 8D2 passes unanimously, and then item 82E is a companion item which allows for the easement. I'm sorry, allows for the assessment. This is the actual assessment that goes into place. Cast your votes. It passed unanimously as well. And Pete, they've asked for the emergency on this item.
Move the emergency.
All right, cast your votes, and the emergency passes. On item 8F, this is the third time we've seen this one, so this will give us some enforcement on sales tax collection. This is here for a final hearing. Any comments or questions from council on this matter? Anyone signed up to speak today? All right, we're voting on item 8F. Cast your votes. Passed unanimously. Item 8G consists of three items that have come to us from the Traffic Commission. All three are in Ward 6. Meg, how do you feel about these?
Mayor, these all relate to the MAFS projects at Van Buren Elementary School, so I would move approval.
All right, we're voting on first on item 8G1. Anyone here wishing to speak under any of these three items? Okay, item 8G1. Cast your votes. Passed unanimously. Meg, a motion on item 8G2?
Move approval, please.
Cast your votes. Passed unanimously. And item 8G3?
A motion on G3, thank you.
Cast your votes, and it passed unanimously as well. Item 8H is also a public hearing. This is the second time we've had an opportunity to look at the modification proposed for the Scenic River overlay. Any comments or questions here on this public hearing? All right, how about a motion then to move it forward?
Move the item.
Cast your votes on 8H. It passed unanimously. Then item 8I, it's also the second time we've had this in front of us. This is a public hearing to discuss the franchise agreement with Cox Cable. Anyone here from the public wishing to speak on this item? All right, how about a motion then to move it on? Cast your votes, and item 8I passed unanimously. Item 8J is another item on the Cox arrangement, and this is also a public hearing. Is anyone here wishing to speak under any item listed under 8J? All right, how about a motion to move that one on? Cast your votes. It passed unanimously. Item 8K is a public hearing. It's the second time we've had this in front of the council. It has to do with setting the fees for the parking meters.
Actually, L has the fees, K designated areas.
Ah, thanks for the catch. All right, item 8K has to do with the parking meters that are being added and adjusted. Cast your votes. Passed unanimously. And item 8L?
Sets the fees.
This sets the fees, okay. Cast your votes. Passed unanimously. Item 8M is a public hearing regarding dilapidated structures. Is there anyone here wishing to speak under any item listed under 8M? All right, how about a motion? Cast your votes. Passed unanimously. Item 8N is a public hearing regarding unsecured structures. We have one person that has signed up to speak. Is anyone here wishing to speak under any item listed under 8N?
I believe his item was on the strike.
Okay, Jeff James had signed up to speak, so Jeff left once it was struck from the agenda. Okay. Let's go ahead then and vote on item 8N. Cast your votes. Passed unanimously. And item 8O is a public hearing regarding the budget. As those who have watched closely, we've had three separate budget meetings, had a lot of really spirited discussion here about this year's budget, which is the largest in city history. We have a number of citizens that have signed up to speak. I'll call them in the order they've been handed to me. They'll each have three minutes to discuss these issues with council. Joe Serge Nelson? Okay. Nidro Ruth? Nidra Ruth?
I live at 8508 St. Michael's Court, and this makes my third visit to the council. And I would really appreciate Sunday service. It would mean I could go do errands and my, it would be cheaper. And if I had to work, I would be able to go to work without having to take a cab. And I appreciate you letting me tell, talk to you about that. Thank you.
I appreciate you coming down, Nidra. Thank you. Good morning.
Good morning. I'm Juanita Condeville. My address is 6702 South May Avenue, Apartment C, Oklahoma City, 73159. I'm here, I'm part of the blind community, and having Metro Transit services on Sunday would really be a benefit for me and the community as far as versus taking a cab being so costly. And it gives me more flexibility and accessibility to and from my destination on Sundays, which allows me to do, get a lot more things done. So that's, that's it.
All right, thanks, Juanita.
Okay, thank you.
Ray Crowder?
I'm Ray Crowder, living at 2924 West Hill. And I as well am here on behalf of any expansion to the Metro Transit service that considered for the Sunday service. In the times that I have visited with Metro Transit and to the public hearings, one of the issues has been for people who want to use service on Sunday, and of course, there's none at this point in time. So I have seen a number of people who, because of lack of transportation, do not get to do what they would like to on Sundays, whether it be going to church or other uses. So I do support any type of expansion or further service with Metro Transit.
All right. Thanks, Ray.
Good morning. Thank you, Your Honor and council. My name is Michael Hinton of 1729 Northwest 3rd Street, Oklahoma City, Oklahoma. 73106 is my postcode. Your Honor and council, I am very thrilled at reviewing the proposed Metro Transit service route changes, and the most salient item on the agenda are the Northwest Express route and even more so the weekend service in which Saturday service will operate also on Sundays. Further in the distance, I strongly encourage the implementation of this service as well on bank holidays, that is, holidays such as Fourth of July, Labor Day, Christmas Day, and what have you. And I strongly support this proposed service and will be actively campaigning to give this widest dissemination possible to the best of my abilities and resources. The Sunday service will be more practical to the riding public and eliminate the need of having Metro Link, which badly limits riders on Sundays. Further, I propose the revival of a Metro Transit Steering Committee like the one in which I served on for nearly five years, under the leadership of former Metro Transit Director Randall Hugh. I was at a meeting last week, I believe it's June 13th, no, June 8th, with COTPA, Central Oklahoma Transportation Parking Authority, and got a copy of their agenda which I'm still studying and will be giving my inputs to them. And also will be coming in future dates to this council and to speak with you folks. And I thank you for this moment to be heard.
Thanks, Michael, as always. Kathy Tooton?
I live at 333 Northwest 5th Street, Apartment 2405, Oklahoma City, Oklahoma, 73102. I'm here to talk on behalf of the extended service on Sunday for Metro Transit in regards to the fact that there's a lot of people, not just people with disabilities like us, but a lot of other people with, because of the economy, the way it still is, and they have to rely on the lower income jobs, they're not able to afford transportation of their own. And so we ride the Sunday service. I ride it every Sunday, along with Monday through Saturday. And there's a lot of people who have to be able to get to work, church, do shopping, and other things like that. And it is very important that we have the Sunday service. Metro Link is better than nothing, but it's very limited. A lot of people can't get back and forth from home to work and back or to anything else they need to do. That, that just means the simple necessity of, you know, being able to take care of their family. And so I strongly encourage you to consider, reconsider, given the funding for this in your budget. It is very important because most people who ride the Metro Link aren't able to get everywhere they need to, and they end up having to walk a mile or two to get to work from where they're dropped off. And the Sunday service buses would give us a lot more expansion because the buses on Saturday will do a lot better than what Metro Link is doing presently on Sunday. Thank you very much.
All right. Kathy, thank you. And I, as I believe council is aware, and if they're not, I want them to be, that the Sunday service is not in the budget that we're about to vote on. It could be added at a future meeting at council's discretion, but it is not really part of the budget discussion today necessarily.
Can I ask a question about that?
Sure.
So Sunday bus service is not part of the budget. The Northwest Expressway route is. Is that correct? That's...
We're adding $1.3 million in services for transit enhancements. Doug, can you tell specifically what, what's in the COTPA additions?
Right, the Northwest Expressway service, the enhancements to four of the lines are as well as the increased cost for fuel and personnel costs make up the $1.3 million increase. The cost specifically for the Northwest Highway service, I'm trying to look at that very quick.
And then while you're looking that up...
$151,000 is for Northwest Highway.
And, and how far out, how far west does that go?
Rick, can you see, I don't know if the exact route has been determined yet, but...
The Northwest route, Rick, that we've added this year as an additional service?
This is a route that, that's yet to be completely defined, but we're anticipating somewhere in the vicinity of, let's say, MacArthur and Memorial coming to the downtown area.
How does that, you've written publicly that you think that the, the bus service needs to contract. How is that consistent with some of your public comments about kind of shrinking the, contracting the system, going out to Memorial and MacArthur?
This is a situation in which, you know, we, we do get demands for our, and we have really a very ineffective park and ride operation right now. So this is an opportunity to reach out to some of those choice riders who would prefer to, on an economic basis, catch, catch the bus to get downtown as a, as a central workplace area. And by establishing some park and ride locations, eliminate some of the pressure, frankly, that we're having on the parking activities as well. So it's, it's really kind of serving two purposes. It's attracting a ridership base that we currently don't have. It's also addressing some of our issues relative to parking demand in the downtown area. Again, it's dependent upon us being able to work out park and ride relationships with whether there are shopping centers or churches in the area to be, to give folks a place where they can congregate, catch the bus, and, and move en masse.
Probably the only issue in this budget that has been publicly discussed, debated, pleaded for is Sunday bus service. There's Sunday bus service in Little Rock, Fort Worth, Austin, Omaha, Salt Lake City. San Antonio has 75 bus routes on Sunday. Are you aware of any city in America of our size and our budget, $900 million, that has no public transportation on Sundays?
Not as I stand here.
That any team, any city with an NBA team that has no public transportation on Sundays? Even chickens, there, there are a few. But public transportation, there's zero. And, and so is there, is there a compromise? Your, your estimate of Sunday service would be 1.5 million?
That's correct. That would be for a 12, a 12-month period of time.
Is there any kind of compromise, doing it for six months and trying it as an experiment, doing it two Sundays of the month, I mean, that would make it more economically feasible?
You know, the, the challenge we have, and we've talked about this when we've initiated pilot programs in the past, is it, it does take time for people to, to change their lifestyle and make adjustments to that, particularly if this is going, if they're going to be dependent upon this to get to places of employment. We know that a large percentage of our ridership, our surveys tell us that half of our riders are taking our service to jobs. I think if you're going to effectively evaluate that, you've got to give it time. You've been, you've understood in the past when we've talked about new service additions that we need to give it 12 months. To do anything shorter than that, I don't think is a fair assessment. You know, to, to start saying we'll do it on the first or third Sundays of the month, that type of an approach, I, I would just question the validity of, of what would come out as a result.
Okay. This is the largest budget in city history, now, more than $900 million. And what would be the threshold, and we're, we're a far outlier from cities our size in, in America. So what would be the threshold, do you think? How big would the budget have to be before we could add Sunday bus service?
Rick's for Sunday bus service, I think. I don't see an advocate for it.
Okay.
Yeah, the, the question is, is that as we, this was a good budget year for us, and it is the largest budget that we've had, and we're able to add services in several areas. The largest percentage department that was added was the money that we added to, to transit services. But not the largest net dollars, the largest net dollars went to the police department with the 22 positions we added there. As we put together the additions to the budget, we tried to respond to what we believe were the citizens and the council's concerns as we outlined in our finance meetings that we've had. Included in that is code enforcement, is additional money for transit, is additional resources for police, and additional resources for the streets, for the condition of our streets and streets of servicing. Those were the four areas that we primarily focused on as we put those additional dollars into the budget.
But how would it, I mean, I've read the steady stream of emails in support of Sunday bus service. I haven't read any in opposition. I haven't heard of any opposition to Sunday bus service.
I don't think anyone is opposed. It's just a matter of balancing priorities.
Polling, I think, is, is showing that this is what's clearly most in demand of ridership. How does the Northwest Expressway route jump, jump Sunday bus service and, I mean, other than the, the amount of dollars involved?
I'm sorry?
You can answer that one.
Well, you know, it's, it's a new service outreach that we were trying to do, but in part, it also comes back to economics. I mean, there's a significant price difference between doing the, doing the park and ride service versus doing the Sunday service, so...
What is the price difference?
Did you say it was 150,000?
150 versus a million five.
Okay. Yeah, that's a big difference.
Yeah, Gary? So it's, it's really not one or the other. I mean, you're talking, that's a big gap.
Well, all, all your, all the changes we're making are 1.3 million. Sunday bus service is 1.5 million.
Okay, so we could, we could take all those others and do Sunday bus service. That's a legitimate discussion. Okay, Gary? Do you want to say something?
Take all of the transit issues, you're saying? We're giving them already?
We're adding 1.3 million to the transit budget this year in terms of the Northwest Expressway route and some, some additional runs on existing routes. That's going to cost 1.3 million. We're doing that instead of spending 1.5 million on Sunday bus service. I'm imagining that, that the citizens, if, if polled, would rather have Sunday bus service rather than a Northwest Expressway route and some changes to the existing lines.
Part of that 1.3 includes some improvements that are probably very necessary. It isn't a choice thereof. It's like additional cost for fuel, and we did do some additional, like an additional position in the maintenance area, and so there are some things like that that are, are necessary. But, but the fuel, I don't think is something that, that is, I think it's something we have to do.
At the risk of being labeled a speed trip, could the budget absorb another million and a half dollars? As you point out, we have a good budget year. We've got good forecasts for the revenue stream. I don't believe them, but they're good forecasts. And if they are right, we could probably absorb 100, another million and a half dollars without doing serious damage to other projects in the budget.
We, since we put the budget together, we have received our sales tax checks for May and for June. And we had projected a 3% increase in, in those, is what we projected in the budget. What we anticipated was this year's collections plus 3%. And, and because of that, good checks for May and June, that the 3% on top of that, there is some type of, of buffer on top of the existing budget. But again, you know, it's, it's if...
I understand.
Here's, here's what I suggest. I suggest we vote on the budget as is, and if a council member next week or the week after wants to add an amendment to put Sunday bus service in, we'll see how the votes go. The money is there this year. May not be there next year, may not be there the year after that. It's there this year. It's just a matter of adjusting priorities.
If we can do that, let's characterize next year then as a, as a test year. And if Sunday service doesn't work out as we anticipate it might work out, then we can, you know, if we don't have the money, we can modify it some way. But what is the value of waiting a week or two weeks to do this? I'm not sure I understand.
Well, I think it needs to be merically vetted and, 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 you know...
Well, I've received...
I mean, well, it also needs to be, I don't know how well it's been, it's been quantified. I mean, it, you know, things in the budget have been pretty much nailed down. How does, does Sunday bus service, does that receive the same level of attention as far as what it would cost and how it would work as the other aspects of the budget have?
Yes, because, I mean, before we'd bring forward an initiative like that, I mean, we, we looked at it from a staffing standpoint, from an equipment standpoint, in terms of what it would take to initiate it. So I have confidence in the numbers in that respect.
Could we cap it at 1.5 million? I mean, that's, that's what we get?
You, you mean, in perpetuity?
No, for one, for this year.
Oh, well, I mean...
It would be whatever we decide.
Yeah. I, I'd, yeah, I'd love to see us go to Sunday bus service. I think you would, Rick. What we're doing by adding this 1.3 is we're following the pattern that we've, we've followed over the last two or three years. We've incrementally tried to improve the existing service. What I don't have an answer for is if we're going to spend 1.5 million more on the transportation system, would Sunday service be what we did with it? Would we not, would we not enhance internal routes? I think right now, Sunday bus service is, is something that we have always, lots of people are interested in. I get the same emails all the rest of you do about that. But I wonder if we weren't doing some of the other things that we're doing, if we wouldn't be getting emails about those things. And I wonder if we put an option out there that said, Sunday service or a much more enhanced internal system enhancing the frequency of what we already have. We have seen, we know that works. We know that works. The two routes that we put on a couple of years ago have performed amazingly well by just increasing frequency. And we, we've tried, we've tried it again with another route last, and it worked well in that route. So we're, we're continuing, by the current budget, continues to pursue tried and true methods to improve the system. I would love to please people, everybody by putting on Sunday bus service, but I would want to know, is that one and a half million, but where we would spend the money, if we had one and a half million more to put in the system, would it be Sunday service? Or would it not be an enhancement in the current system like we've been incrementally doing in the past?
You're, you're asking the question, I would say it is. I would say it is the, the next step.
Well, it may well be.
People want and what this city needs and deserves.
It may well be, but I don't know that that's been vetted. I, I think that's why I would say a week or two would not be a bad thing to wait, because I'd like a, I'd like a serious answer. I agree with you, it probably would be, but I'd like an answer from the budget folks and, and somebody...
What we're saying, Ed, is that the 1.3, based on Rick's recommendation... What we're saying, Ed, is that the 1.3, based on Rick's recommendations, seems justified and follows the pattern that we've done in previous years. If we are going to spend more of our discretionary dollars on transit, it's my opinion that Sunday bus service is probably the best direction to go to. You could weigh that in several different ways.
I mean, there are lots of cities that struggle with frequency. There are lots of cities that struggle with, you know, inadequate buses. There's no city our size that doesn't have Sunday bus service. I mean, that's where we're a far outlier. And then as a policy, I just don't, in the private conversations, the conversations I've had about what's going to, it's going to take to turn bus around in the years to come, this Northwest Expressway route is not consistent with, as a policy.
It's where the need, it's where the need is, it's not where we want the need to be. I think, you know, Rick's not putting this route in there because he thinks nobody's going to ride it. He's got, he's got demand.
Right.
He's got demand on this route. We wish it were somewhere else. We don't wish it were so far from the core of the city, but it's where it is. He's addressing the city as it is.
Well, I think in the process of getting an answer to this, though, I'd like to know, is what we're doing consistent with the overall idea that we ought to be shrinking the size of the grid and making it more effective, which I think, and I think perhaps the majority of the council agrees, is maybe the best long-term solution.
All right, let's listen Skip talk. He's been patient.
I just wanted to know, presently, it's obvious that, have we ever had best service on Sundays?
Not since I've been employed here, and I don't know that we have, ever.
What we do is MetroLink.
Can't say. I'm sorry?
We do provide MetroLink, sir.
Yeah, and I do, I do want to make that clarification. We do have a MetroLink service, which they've referred to. Now, that's a contracted service that we have out there from 7:00 in the morning to 7:00 in the evening. It is limited in what it can do, both from standpoint of service area and essentially, you can almost look at it from the standpoint that we have four quadrants in the city. We have one vehicle that operates in those quadrants. It's what we call a route-deviated service. We have certain time points that that bus, that vehicle, is to be at certain locations, and then it has the opportunity to deviate from what you would perceive as an established route, to go make pickups and be more of a curb-to-curb service, which meets our paratransit requirement that the federal government requires that we do. The problem is, with four vehicles operating, it pretty much limits the amount of people that you can carry on that service. And if you look at this service over the last two years, it's been essentially flat. We carry about 125 people on a Sunday on this service, and that's ultimately, basically, its capacity because of the zone that it's trying to service. It's roughly 63rd Street on the north, let's say the I-245 corridor on the south, maybe 74th Street might be a way to define it, goes out to as far as MacArthur, and then goes to, I want to say Martin Luther King or Bryant on the east side. And just, they just circulate in those zones. They make connections at the Transit Center, as well as a couple of other locations where people can transfer from one vehicle to the other vehicle. But again, the nature and the scope of the area it's trying to cover with the limited number of vehicles. And this is one that, three years ago, we actually, you know, we were initially recommended we cut that service from the standpoint that it was, it was so confining, it had very limited ridership. A number of people came to council and spoke in front of you and said, "You're taking away my opportunity to get to work or to do other basic functions that many of us take for granted on a Sunday that we can do." And we modified that service. We cut back slightly during that tough economic time, went from five vehicles to four vehicles, but at least to try to maintain some service out there in the street.
So out of the MetroLink, you're saying that on an average, there is, in a month?
No, that's a day. That's on a Sunday.
So that's on a Sunday. So you have some numbers that you could give some gauge in reference to a predictability of the number of people that would ride if you had a regular bus service based upon the ridership on the MetroLink? And that's with the fact that you said that you only have four?
Vehicles.
Vehicles, is that right?
Yes.
Okay.
Well, let me make a suggestion.
I want to ask one other question, and Mayor, I'll let you go ahead and take over after that. Are there any issues that, under the American Disabilities Act, in reference to transportation, that is a mandate to provide adequate service as it relates to Sunday service?
There's no requirement that we have to provide Sunday service. If we provide Sunday service, then we have to make sure that we're able to provide service to all individuals, which means if you have a mobility impairment and you could not otherwise get to a bus stop, a more traditional bus stop, then we would have to provide what we call our Metrolift service, so that we can come to the curb in front of your house and provide transportation in that way. So the money that we proposed in this budget covers not only our fixed route service, but does provide the ADA complimentary service that we're also required to do.
Okay, thank you. Larry?
Yeah, rather than vote today, I would be in favor of coming back with some additional information. Is it possible that we can meet the transportation needs of the group of people, for example, who've been so faithful in coming down to talk to us on Sunday, by expanding the MetroLink service? Is that a possibility? And it would seem to me that if it was, it might be a more economical possibility, feasibility approach, than just going out and spending a million, whatever it is, to add bus routes on Sunday. So I'd be in favor of getting some information back. Is expanding that service a way to provide transportation on Sunday, and is that would be more effective than just adding a million three in bus routes?
Gary?
Thank you. I have a couple of points I want to make. I don't think any of us don't want to provide the best transit system we can provide in this city. I've never heard anybody in this horseshoe talk about not doing the best we can do. But there's a couple of points I'd like to make about what we're talking about here. If all of a sudden we can find another million and a half dollars, what are we going to cut? Or what are we going to take out of fund balance? Or are we going to increase the revenue estimate? You're going to have to find a million and a half somewhere. How are we going to do that? And if we're going to find new revenue, is this what we would want it to go to? That's a discussion this council hasn't had. I suspect adding Sunday service is something that we could never take away. He's talked about how difficult it is when we try to eliminate a route. My suspicion is, the cost for Sunday service means new employees.
Yes.
So you're going to hire people and then fire them a year later because you didn't want to follow through with Sunday service? You're going to put people in a position where they get used to, and they take their jobs, and they do their lifestyle based on Sunday service, and you're going to eliminate it a year later? So I don't think a year's trial is something that this council wants to get into at some point in time. And I'm going to finish with the same thing I get on my soapbox about every year when we talk about transit. I'd like to know how many of the cities that were discussed here have a standalone, that city by itself entirely funds the transit system and what its square miles are and what type of area it tries to cover with the transit system that it funds entirely, versus how many of them are a metro transit system and has a large taxpayer pool subsidizing or paying for that transit system somehow other than out of the general fund? We can provide an excellent bus transit system with the monies that we provide if we keep it at the scale that all these other cities have, that we'd be compared to. When you're talking about covering 100 square miles or 150 square miles versus 670 square miles, it's a totally different animal. And you can do a lot more if you want to shrink this system down, and that's been talked about before, but nobody wants to take on that task. Do we want to earnestly and sincerely start talking about creating, writing off the fact that we're ever going to get a metro transit group put together and say, "Okay, we've got to do it with Oklahoma City dollars"? When are we going to talk about shrinking this system down to where we can put an excellent transit system in place? Or when are we going to start earnestly and sincerely talking about a metro transit authority that brings in all these other communities around us in a group that creates a funding pool that puts in the kind of transit system they want? If we don't do one of those two, every year, we're going to be hashing over bits and pieces of a transit system, just like we're doing now. I agree with the mayor. I think Sunday service is something we ought to look at, if we're going to provide that kind of a service. But again, we're just piecemealing this thing together, and we're not coming up with a long-term vision and a future of what our metro transit system is going to be. And that's what concerns me more than anything.
Well, we have met, as a region, looking for a distant day when we would set up some sort of taxation district that would be for transit. I don't think the other municipal leaders and county leaders that I've talked to think that time is today, but the preliminary discussions on that distant day have been put in place, and studies have been done, and ACOG has done quite a bit of work on what it would look like, what it could look like, and how other cities have gone down that road, and what our system could look like, too. So some of that groundwork has been done, those conversations have taken place, and there's a lot of issues, and this is one of them, where what we do, what we're doing right now is advancing the conversation toward a day when action will take place. And, you know, the action that we may or may not take place in regard to Sunday service is a very small point of the bigger transit discussion that I think is inevitable for this community down the line. But as long as we have traffic that flows as freely as we do, it is going to be very difficult to get a level of taxation in place that's going to make a significant difference in public transit. You could tweak it, but to make a significant difference, that if people are going to say, "Wow, this is better," it's going to take a lot of money. And I don't necessarily think today that the community is on board with an additional tax for a substantially better transit system. But I think the conversation is healthy because we're heading there. We're just not there today. Yes?
I just, I've heard estimates of as many as 22, 20, 25% of the greater Oklahoma City metro population not having access to a car. You're greater metropolitan area, you're talking about 100,000 people. We can make a substantial difference to our transit system for about a million dollars if you get rid of the Northwest Expressway route. That saves you 151,000. Some of the other, don't do some of the other things that we talked about, and then for putting Sunday bus service, you're going to increase by 1/7 the number of days. You're going to make a huge difference in terms of people's economic development. How many of these jobs are people excluded from because they can't work, they can't get to the job on Sunday? And just as an economic development issue, it's huge. In terms of religion, how many people can't get to service on Sunday because we don't have any public transportation? The biggest hole in our system is not having Sunday bus service. That is where Oklahoma City is a far, far outlier from any other big league city, if we want to use that term. For about a million dollars, if you cut out these other things, we can make a huge difference in our public transit system. It's about a million dollars. We've never, ever had a budget this big. If the time, if we're not going to do it now, I don't know when we would do it.
I agree with what you say, Councilman Shidene, except with the exception of eliminating Northwest Route, because every person who rides that bus doesn't drive a car downtown, doesn't require a parking space downtown, which we have a shortage of ostensibly. And so I think there's some real advantages to the city as a whole, to have those people come in on a bus as opposed to driving their individual cars downtown. I think we ought to keep the Northwest Route. I agree 100% the fact that Sunday service is the next logical step as we expend our bus system. I think it's consistent with what Councilman White said a while ago. It's an increase of frequency from zero to some number, so we're following the exact pattern that Councilman White suggested. And whether we vote on it today or next week, I really support the idea of finding the additional money to establish Sunday service. We don't have a metropolitan transit system now. We have a city transit system. And until we reach out to those other cities, then we're not going to have much support. So I think we need to look at our city, our situation, our circumstances, and make the best decision we can based on the facts that we have to work with.
David?
Your Honor, it seems like if we did postpone, I mean, if we did adopt the budget as it currently stands, but continue to address the question as to expanding public transportation into Sunday, which I am in favor of, would we need a workshop? Because I do think with these various views and ideas, it's going to require some time to look into these options and come to a conclusion that perhaps some of the existing routes during the normal work week need to be reduced to save some expenses, to then help fund the Sunday route, and maybe even look at other sources of revenue, such as increasing parking rates or meter rates to help subsidize the Sunday service, just as an example. But I just think it's going to take some time, and I think everybody on the council has a level of interest in it that would support some type of special meeting in addition to the Transit Committee.
I think there's enough support discussed here that we ought to have a vote on Sunday service at some point in the future. What it looks like, you know, I think is kind of, it's going to be key to getting the five-plus votes that it would necessarily put into place. You want to say something, Ed? We probably ought to move on.
Well, Mayor, I just, I mean, I'd like to offer an amendment today. I mean, I think a lot of people have put a lot of work into it. This is the only issue that's been controversial in this year's budget. I mean, or not the only, okay. The most discussion, sorry, the most public discussion, citizen input, has been on this issue.
Most citizen input, but my gosh, we had a lengthy discussion last week of police staffing.
Right.
You know, and if we've got a million and a half.
A lot of advocates, a lot of groups have put a lot of effort into this issue.
Here's my question, that I would have difficulty voting on it today, is, because the idea is, what if we put it in there for one year? Because that would address some of the concerns that Gary expressed, and I think I heard Pat express a little bit of that concern, too. You know, we have the money this year, but, you know, do we want to put it in one year? Do we want to come up with a benchmark that says, "Look, if Sunday service in one year generates this much attention or ridership, then the council intends to do it next year", you know, if the money's there? You know, there's certain types of parameters that could be put into this. So we decide now whether or not this is going to be permanently in the budget, or if it is just a one-year, you know, test pilot situation, to whether or not the Sunday service and the demand for Sunday service is really there, as we suspect it might be. I'd like a little bit more of that vetted out before I'd feel comfortable voting for it. I'd have a tough time voting against Sunday service at any level, but I'd really like for us to establish whether or not it's a one-year deal or we intend to do it permanently.
I would agree, but at the same time, I think that this issue is much bigger than today. And I truly believe that this is just one of the other concerns of our transit system, that we probably need to have a full, you know, intense workshop to determine how and how far we will go in reference to revising some of the routes in reference to our bus system. You know, because I had the same concerns presented to me on Sunday about the routes from the airport, of the number of people that work on Meridian, the number of people that fly into Oklahoma City, and the route timing in reference to coming downtown. But at the same time, I understand that the issue of all the concerns of those individuals who have expressed their needs for Sunday service, but at the same time, I would just like to have some time to determine the actual numbers as it relates to how long, how far will the million dollar go? I mean, is this a number just for today, or would we be looking at, you know, adding a million dollars to the transit budget every year that is going to satisfy the need of Sunday service? And I just think that those are some issues that we probably need to have more time to make sure, that if we're going to put it in as a base service, then we know every year that that's a money that we've got to factor in in reference to provide that service. Because at the same time, I think we could see ourselves being set up for the chief of police when he comes in and says, "Well, you know, we're only getting 22 officers, but we really need 200 officers." And for the same plea, you know, we could be sitting here saying, "Well, why don't we go ahead and do the 200 officers?" And I just don't want us to do it on a haphazard basis, and in all due respect to Councilman Shidene, I fully support the need to have a more global service in reference service in reference to transit, and especially for those individuals who are totally dependent upon the service as it relates to Sunday. Because for some of these individuals, Sunday is no different than Saturday, and it's no different than Friday in reference to their quality of life and the needs that they have in reference to making an income. So, but I would just like to see if we could figure out a way to factor it all in in a way where we know each year when we come back for the budget that we're going to have Sunday service. And this is the amount of money that we know we have to appropriate for Sunday service. But one last question. How much does it cost for the Metro Link? When we're talking about the $1 million that we're talking in reference to adding Sunday service now, what is the approximate cost for the Metro Link?
The cost for the service is about $600,000. The cost to the city for that service is about $300,000, roughly. Could be 350. I don't know the exact number off the top of my head. And the difference between those two numbers I just gave you is there's a certain amount of federal funding that we can, that we put on towards the Metro Link service that would not carry over to the Sunday service operated by us, because we, it is a contracted service, a third-party service, and there's a portion of federal money that's available to allocate to a service like that. But what the city is actually paying out is about $300,000.
Would any of that federal money be available in reference to our regular transit system as far as Sunday as opposed to the Metro Link?
Could be. It's just a reallocation. We basically get a formula amount every year, and we decide how to break up that formula amount. We would take that money and reallocate it in a different qualifying category that would allow us to spend it in a different way. The bottom line is, we would still have benefit of that money. It's not like we're going to lose that money. But I have to spend it in a slightly different way.
So it's possible we could juggle, I mean, not juggle, but...
Reallocate.
I quit.
Okay. All right. Well, can I just ask, would it be possible to defer item O for one week?
The entire budget?
Yeah.
I don't think that's wise. I don't think it's necessary.
I, okay, I just, I can't vote for a budget without having this resolved. I mean, it may not matter to anyone, but I just want to make that clear that, and I don't, I think the two go together. I can't.
We'd like to have your vote, but if your issue is that $150,000 for the Northwest Route, that's really a small amount of this budget.
No, it's the Sunday bus service.
Okay. I think the Sunday bus service deserves a vote at some point, but it just doesn't have to be today.
Well, I would move by motion with the big, that we schedule within two weeks a vote on Sunday service.
Okay. Well, I mean, that's, councilperson can bring that up. That doesn't necessarily need to be, you know, added as an amendment today.
We don't have a meeting in two weeks.
We can get it on the agenda for next week. No. Yes, sir.
Let's give everybody an opportunity to answer all the questions they have regarding Sunday service.
Yeah. And we need something on paper that we can look at.
At the risk of just beating it to death, though, one of the things I think is that here we have an outcry of people. We have people here in the audience, we did emails, and it's because the choice is Sunday service or no Sunday service. But that's not really the choice. The choice is Sunday service or 17 or 18 more police officers, or more fixing streets. I mean, while I'm in favor of Sunday service, I think we ought to debate whether or not that's where we want to spend the money.
And I think that's the debate we have when we have the Sunday service to look at. Because you're right, a million and five will put roughly 15 police officers on the street for a year.
And I'm not saying which way. I'd go, but I think that's the comparison you have to make. You can't make it against nothing, and that's what it's being compared to now.
And, yeah, and sometimes that is the role that we have to play that's not necessarily acknowledged in the general public. Yes?
And defer a week length, he can tell us before he wants to buy the money.
All right, let's, I'd like to see us vote on O. Okay, second. Anyone else from the public who should speak on item O? All right. We're voting on the budget. Cast your votes. It passes by a count of seven to one? Pat? Oh, eight to one. Item 8P is a public hearing. This is our annual look at the Public Safety Sales Tax, which was placed into our budget over 20 years ago. But every year, we look at both police and fire and explain how those dollars will be spent, and so we have a public hearing to allow the citizens to come down and discuss it with us. Is there anyone here wishing to speak under any item listed under 8P? All right, how about a motion, then? This is voting on the fire aspect of the Public Safety Sales Tax dollars. Cast your votes. Passed unanimously. And then item 8Q is also a public hearing, but this regards the police aspect of the 3/4 cent Public Safety Sales Tax. Is there anyone here wishing to speak on this part of the item? All right, we have a motion and a second. We're voting on item 8Q. Yeah, sure, Larry.
Jim, both P and Q, do conform to the general entry agreement? Thank you, sir.
Yes, sir.
All right, cast your votes on 8Q. Passed unanimously. Want to thank the staff for its work on the budget this year. I know how much work goes into that, Jim.
And we're not done.
That's right. It sounds like we're not, but 99.9% of budget is done, and it's the largest budget in city history. So we commend the citizens of this city for putting together the, all of the aspects of this, and their feedback has been very helpful. On item 8R, it's a revocable permit with Perry Publishing to hold the Juneteenth Festival on June 16th in Washington Park. Is there anyone here representing this concept? Come forward, we'd love to hear from you. We'll need your name and address for the record.
My name is Connie Neal. My address is 1325 Northwest 106, Oklahoma City, Oklahoma, 73117.
And we'll give you a few seconds to pitch this event.
The last couple of years, we had a northeast 23rd underneath the stoplight. It was really hot. It's like that concrete pavement, no shade, it was really hot. So we all determined, taking it to the park where there's a little bit more grass and shade. And so that's what we really decided to do, and what we did this week, we have a week-long celebration of Ralph Ellison Library, started on yesterday, and the finale is on Saturday with Barcase performing at the end. So it's, I'm very excited about this.
It's in Word 7. Skip, you want to make the motion?
First of all, I would like to say that, you know, we just had a meeting yesterday in reference to the development and redevelopment of our park system. And I am just elated that out of the number of years in which we've had in the city certain events recognized in Juneteenth, that we have now come back to the park, and that we have some great land and great park areas for these type of events. And so I commend you all for taking the event to Washington Park, which I think has been, you know, way underutilized, and it gives an opportunity to elevate the park back up. And so I'm sure that your attendance will be much larger, and the parking will be a lot better, and of course, you'll have some shade, but at least you have the ability to put up some tents and provide a venue for vendors. So thank you very much for the great work you're all doing in reference to that and Ralph Ellison Library.
All right. Cast your votes on item 8R. Passed unanimously.
Thank you.
Item 8S is a right-of-way permit request to hold fireworks displays on July 3rd and 4th. Is there anyone here representing any of the fireworks shows? All right, how about a motion, then? Cast your votes. Passed unanimously. Item 8T is a resolution about our hazardous mitigation plan, and I think Frank Barnes is going to come in and lead us with a presentation.
I'm Frank Barnes, the emergency manager for the City of Oklahoma City. With me tonight is, or today, is Jason Knight, the police liaison to emergency management, Greg Adams, our administrative coordinator, and Diane Abernathy, representing Scientific Applications International Corporation, who was the consultant on this project. This presentation is an overview of the city's updated hazard mitigation plan, the review process, and the changes made since the council first saw this plan last November and authorized its submission to the Oklahoma Department of Emergency Management and to FEMA for their review and approval. Next slide. There is a history with hazard mitigation dating back to 1968 with the National Flood Insurance Act, and local governments were encouraged to take community-based mitigation actions to lessen flood risks. In 1988, Congress passed the Stafford Act, and one of the components of the Stafford Act was the Hazard Mitigation Grant Program, which provides funds to state and local governments for hazard mitigation. These funds are made available after a disaster declaration has occurred, and for every dollar that the federal government spends in disaster assistance, 15 cents is provided for hazard mitigation. In 2000, the Stafford Act was revised or amended in the Disaster Mitigation Act of 2000, and in this legislation, the federal government required that local jurisdictions have a hazard mitigation plan in order to receive federal hazard mitigation dollars, and further, they required the plan be updated every five years. When we talk about hazard mitigation, we're talking about any sustained action taken to reduce or eliminate the long-term risk to life and property from hazard and their effects. And the key word up there is sustained. Hazard mitigation is not something you do just once in a while, or something you do once and then forget about it. It's an ongoing process that you do week after week, month after month, year after year. Now, in the new plan, we updated the hazards, the hazard identification, the hazard assessment, and the hazard profiles. And as part of that process, last year, we did an online community survey and also a survey of the Hazard Mitigation Committee members. We had a total of 57 responses between those two groups, and the percentage of respondents who were extremely concerned or very concerned about a hazard determined whether or not that hazard was included in the plan and in the priority that was given to it. The updated hazard assessment also reflects disasters and events that have occurred over the last 10 years. Another change in the plan was a clearly stated hazard mitigation strategy, and the key elements to that strategy include collaboration, working with residents, stakeholders, and city government personnel to develop the plan, creating an educated and prepared community that is disaster-prepared, disaster-resilient, and able to respond efficiently and effectively to disasters that do occur, reducing the loss of life and property damage from hazard impact, and following a comprehensive and inclusive planning process. In addition to the strategy, we developed four hazard mitigation goals. Previously, in the previous plan, they had 81 goals, which was obviously a large number of goals, and we've reduced that to four goals that are aligned with the state's hazard mitigation plan. The other thing we did is we changed from mitigation measures to mitigation actions. And mitigation actions are taken to minimize future vulnerability to hazards in accordance with the community goals. So one of our goals that we have is reduce loss of life and protect public health and safety. One of the mitigation actions to achieve that goal is to encourage storm shelter and safe room construction or installation for existing homes through rebate programs possibly funded through the Hazard Mitigation Grant Program and other sources of funding that may become available. We had 58 mitigation actions that carried over into this plan from the 2006 plan, because these are ongoing and continuous actions that are likely going to carry over in every subsequent plan from now and into the far future. Some of the 2006 mitigation actions were consolidated. We found, for example, we found four mitigation actions that talked about safe rooms and storm shelters, and so we combined those into one. The, all total, there were 80 mitigation actions in this plan compared to 85 from the previous plan. And as I mentioned, we did change the terminology from mitigation measures to mitigation actions. Last November, you authorized submission of the plan to the Oklahoma Department of Emergency Management, known as OEM, and to FEMA for their review and approval. OEM reviewed the plan, they made some requested changes to that plan, and we've incorporated those changes. FEMA reviewed it, they made some requested changes to the plan, and we've incorporated those changes into the plan as well. And we're now submitting it to the city council for formal adoption that is required by federal regulations. So some of the changes that OEM and FEMA required were relatively minor in nature. They wanted us to clarify some of the hazard profiles. For example, under severe thunderstorm, they wanted us to break out the actual hazards being hail and lightning. So we did that. They wanted location-specific statements. When we pointed out to them that the hazards we have impact the entire city, not just select locations, we were required to put in every chapter that the hazard impacts the city of Oklahoma City. They wanted some severity ratings for some of the hazards, as well as probability ratings. And in a couple places, they wanted us to do some hazard mapping. So for example, we went out, worked with the fire department, and they put together a map that shows the risk of urban interface wildland fires in the city. Lastly, once the plan is adopted, we will submit the adoption resolution to FEMA, who will then issue us a letter saying it is formally approved. And then comes the implementation and maintaining the plan for the next five years. We will maintain an active hazard mitigation committee that will meet at least annually. We'll review the plan and the progress that each city department has made towards achieving the mitigation actions. We'll conduct an annual public forum for public input with regards to the plan. We'll document the implementation of our mitigation actions, and the city departments will work to integrate the hazard mitigation plan, and specifically, the mitigation actions into other planning activities such as the city's comprehensive plan. Any questions?
Questions for Frank? Thanks very much. This is a resolution. I'll need a motion. Move it forward. Okay, we're voting on item 8T. Cast your votes. Passed unanimously.
Mayor, when we have the storms and there's activity going on of inclement weather, it's always reassuring to know that Frank Barnes is at the, at control of emergency management and watching over us and keeping us with the updates. So thank you for all you do during those emergency situations.
Thanks, Frank. Item 8U is a resolution approving police policy 380.0. Here to explain what that means is our police chief, Bill Citi.
What we're introducing today is a new policy that basically states what our policy is in relationship to how we deal with people with limited English proficiency. We've always had procedures in place, we've had them in for years, but when we had, the Department of Justice has been doing routine checks on major cities throughout the country, and during our inspection, one of the recommendations was made that we have an overall policy as well as having procedures, and that's what this is about. It's basically doing what we've always been done, but it's stated in our policy.
All right. Chief, thanks. Okay, we're voting on item 8U. Cast your votes. Passed unanimously. Item 8V, understand we do not need executive session?
That's correct.
All right, how about a motion? Voting on item 8V. Passed unanimously. Item 8W, understand we do not need executive session?
There's no update at this time.
All right. How about a motion there? Cast your votes. Passed unanimously. Item 8X, I guess we do need executive session today. All right. Cast your votes. That item moves to executive session. Item 8Y is claims recommended for denial. Is there anyone here wishing to speak under any item listed under 8Y? All right, how about a motion? Cast your votes. Passed unanimously. Item 9 is a claim recommended for approval. Cast your votes. Passed unanimously. Item 10 is items from council. Pat, you want to get us started today?
I have nothing, Your Honor, thank you.
All right, Skip?
I have nothing, Your Honor.
Meg? All right, David?
Just to mention that Councilman Ryan and Councilwoman Sawyer was able to attend, along with me, the press conference for the YWCA last week, and it's a great partnership the city has, and it's fortunate that there's a need for services like that, but it's great that there's people out there willing to assist victims of abuse, and it just was great to be a part of that presentation. Thank you. Thank you.
Pete?
Just a brief comment about the discussion concerning Sunday bus service. I would really like to see us look at transit, bus transit, more globally than just compartmentalizing the Sunday service. We've talked for a long time about that the future of the bus service in Oklahoma City will require a couple of things. One is a lot more money, and two is a more reasonable approach to the service area. And I think we're just pushing, kicking the can down the road by continuing throwing a little money here and a little money there and not really talking about this overriding question, which I think is the one that's going to make a difference. And that is, what's the service area, what service area are we really going to try to do? I would like to see, regardless of what we do next week, about the, I would like to see a standing, or at least an ad hoc committee formed for the purpose of looking at that and meeting with Rick and coming back with some recommendations about what I perceive, again, to be the most pressing problem in the transit service, and that is, we try to do too much with too little, and I think a better way to do it is decide what we can do, what area we can serve well, and start there. And so we can be proud of the bus service we have in a certain area, and when we expand it, we expand that service to more people, as opposed to just a little dab here and a little dab there, and fix this route and fix that route and add a new one here and there. Just a personal suggestion, but I'd like for at least the mayor to think about the possibility of creating, and I don't necessarily have to be on it, I'm not asking--
I just think how politically unviable of all this.
Well, it definitely--
If we're starting from scratch, it wouldn't look like this, but we're not starting from scratch.
Absolutely, but I think that's, you know, that's why we make all this money. That's why we're all independently wealthy. I think it's a decision that we've got to make. I just don't think we can go on. I drive by these people watching and see them stand at those bus terminals or bus benches and stops every day, and my heart goes out to them every day. If it's raining, or if it's 105 degrees, or if it's 14 below, they're still out there, those people. And we ought to make that, that experience better if we can, and we can by just putting the bit in our mouth and going ahead and deciding what's a better system.
But Pete, I think that's critical in the decision as to whether or not we can come up with another million five, and I just don't think we can do that, look at those issues that you just addressed, and come up with a recommendation within a week.
Yeah, I don't think--
No, I'm not sure we can.
No, I don't mean that. I don't mean to do it in a week, excuse me.
Well, I understand. I'm just saying we're pushing ourselves into a decision within a week's time that I don't think we'll have all the information--
No, I don't think we can do it in a week. I do think, though, it is kicking the can down the road to continue to do it the way we're doing, and that's not good, that's not good stewardship of tax dollars for us to do it that way.
I'm concerned, I agree first with Councilman Shadid, now with Councilman White, I was going to push him for my whole day, but I think the two things that we're talking about are not mutually exclusive. We can do Sunday service and get that out of the way, it's important that we do it, it's necessary, and then step back and do, I think, exactly what Councilman White suggested, just have some kind of a long-range plan for our bus system. We've been doing it since I've been on the council six years. We come to the budget and we add a little dollar here, a little dollar there, and I think we get the bus running on Sunday, and then we can sit back and take some time and decide what the long-range picture of the bus system could be like.
Well, I think we need to, we haven't, we need to not lose sight of the fact that there's nothing happened to our bus service that doesn't go through COTPA. We have a trust to do that, and the stuff that comes forward in the budget is what the trust has identified in their expertise is what the transit system needed. We've had those workshops in the past where we met with COTPA. The COTPA Trust and the council have met together in a workshop to talk about transit and parking and everything else. They've heard all of our stuff. So I totally agree with what you're saying, Pete, but we need to understand, we're not working in a vacuum here. There's a trust out there, but if we feel strongly enough about something that needs to go in front of them, and they need to identify how they're going to do that. But I don't want to lose sight of the fact that we still have that COTPA trust sitting out there.
Larry?
Thank you, Your Honor. Just like to report back to the council. Last week, I had the privilege of attending five neighborhood meetings. Musgrave-Pettington and John Glenn were just normal neighborhood meetings. Then there was a special meeting that Sergeant Burkine from the Santa Fe Division came, the Walden Creek Neighborhood Association. That meeting was specifically dealing with public safety and what they thought was the need for more police officers in their particular area. And then Saturday, we had two picnics, both held at Oklahoma City parks, one at Harlow Park, the Windsor Forest Neighborhood Association. Then we went over to Gary's area to, or I guess, you still have Will Rogers' Gary, or does that go to? Went to Dr. Shadid's area, thank you for hosting us. Very impressed at both parks, and the neighbors also were. And I just, I want to come back, this is not a scientific study. I have taught economic research, I know how you do studies, I know forecast of error and things like that, but in every one of those meetings, the common theme of all the residents there was, "We want more police." And so I'll just end on that. Thank you, Your Honor.
Okay, good.
There are two nationally acclaimed speakers coming to Oklahoma City in the next couple of days, one, in my opinion, healthy, one, very unhealthy. Tomorrow is Dan Burden, he's the head of the Walkable and Livable Communities Institute. He's going to have walking tours on Wednesday and Thursday. They'll visit the plaza, Gatewood, and Classen Ten Pen neighborhoods, along with Jeff Speck and others. He would certainly be at the forefront of pedestrian-friendly redevelopment. I would hope that those in the Sustainability Office that take him would visit these three neighborhoods, but would also have him go down EK Gaylord and get his opinion, we've gotten Jeff Speck's in the past, but also see what he has to say about Third and Sheridan and Reno, and what we may or may not do with EK Gaylord. Also get his opinion on the new Central Park and the Convention Center. I mean, we're going to spend half a billion dollars in that area, if you include the streetcar, Convention Center, Central Park. And we're trying to figure out, if we put this Convention Center there, how do we link the Myriad Gardens and the Central Park? How do we make that pedestrian-friendly? I'd like to hear what he has to say, and so I would hope that somebody from our city staff could take him to those areas. You know, last week, Alabama became the first state in the country to unanimously, in both the House and the Senate, pass a law called the Due Process for Property Rights, which basically bans consideration of Agenda 21. This is, unfortunately, I think, the beginning of some dominoes. Arizona, Tennessee, and Kansas all have similar measures moving through their state legislatures. Our state legislature, who's like the teenager who likes to play video games instead of doing their homework, I think will find this irresistible to have something like this come. What's being touted as the nation's foremost authority on this issue is Michael Shaw. He's going to come on Thursday night. Fortunately, he'll be competing against the Thunder, but hundreds of people are expected to attend. And his contention, he wants to talk about the OKC Plan, Agenda 21, and the OKC Plan at the Character End Conference Center at 520 West Main from 7:00 to 9:00 p.m. I just hope that some of our staff, some of our citizens would go and ask hard questions. Number one, why is he charging for the event? He's charging $15 admission. If you're a man or woman of the people, if you're a populist, if you're appealing to Oklahoma City's strong populist history, right, and you care about the people, why are you charging a $15 admission? His contention is that the OKC Plan, which Pat's there, David, Pete, and I, the other councilors have planning commissioners there, there's other people working very hard, that we are somehow agents of the United Nations and working towards abolition of private property and massive reduction of human population. I think, I would invite anyone to come to these meetings. They're at the zoo, the Conference Center, once a month. We're taking a little break now, but we're going to start back. To date, it's been very vanilla, very, I mean, it's mundane, it's, I mean, everybody, with the exception of Pat maybe, has reasonable, well-thought-out opinions. It's, it's, we are, anything but working towards massive reduction of human population is just preposterous. I think, I just want everyone to not, what's happening, what people are trying to do is link, anytime you say sustainability, anytime, they're trying to link that with the United Nations, and it just couldn't be farther from the truth. You can debate about the issues. To me, if you're a true fiscal conservative, then you want to know what the long-term tax liabilities are of the way you design your city. We've talked about streets, your street costs, your long-term maintenance costs, that is being a true fiscal conservative, and you can have a debate about that without it necessarily involving the United Nations. So I'm disappointed, but, you know, if he comes, I just hope that people will attend and ask hard questions on Thursday night. Thank you.
All right, Gary? All right, Skip, did you forget something?
I forgot. I would like to emphasize or at least recognize the presentation by The Oklahoman in reference to one of our fine elementary schools in Oklahoma City, I-89. This Sunday, on the first, on the front page, Edwards Elementary School was the featured school, and with the engagement that the city of Oklahoma City has now been making with our public school systems, I think this is just a great way of showcasing what teachers, parents, grandparents, and students are doing in our elementary schools, who is really the next generation. And the interesting fact about this school is that it's a historical monument in reference to the name itself, which was land that was donated by Mr. Walter Edwards and his wife, an African-American. It is probably the only school in the state of Oklahoma in which the school itself sits on land that was donated by an African-American, and the whole development was developed by that same individual, Mr. Walter Edwards and his wife, Frances Edward Edwards. Edwards Edition, Edwards Park, Edwards Elementary School, Ms. Rhonda Hamilton and her staff is doing a great job in reference to educating the minds and developing those children in Edwards Elementary School, who come from, many of them from very challenged environments. And so I was just elated when I saw the article and the three-page presentation that they did on Edwards Elementary School. And so I think this is how we can really continue to showcase what our children are really doing in our elementary schools and how they will be successful in doing what we do now in running cities, governments, and corporations. Thank you.
All right, on the city manager reports, we have a couple of presentations.
We do. The first one is on our Employment Lands Studies Needs Assessment, and here we go. Russell Claus is here. Trying to find it, I don't see it on the-- Russell? The council all has hard copies, why don't you, I've got an X1 if you need one.
Okay. Seems to have disappeared. I'm here this morning to report on the Employment Lands Needs Assessment and Action Plan. This is a study. It's been going on for some time now. We basically initiated this about two years ago. It involves a number of different partners. It is partially funded by the Economic Development Trust, who kicked in $50,000 for this. We also got a grant from the Economic Development Administration for $100,000, and then we have in-kind assistance from a number of local partners, including BENHAM, the Oklahoma City, Greater Oklahoma City Chamber of Commerce, OGN, ONG, Utilities Department, and Planning Department, have all participated by providing staff support in facilitating the development of this plan. So what I'm going to do, if you're looking at the hard copy, is to go over what the project, the purpose of this project was. We're going to look at the analysis that the consultants went through in terms of evaluating supply and demand of employment lands. And when I talk about employment lands, I'm talking about lands that can facilitate large employers, whether those be industrial, office, other types of large industrial uses, but not restricted solely to industrial. The idea is properties that can facilitate those large employers. And then we're going to look at the recommendations of the consultant as it relates to things that mean we might want to do differently going forward to be able to facilitate an ongoing supply of land, to facilitate the chamber in its efforts to be able to secure large employers coming to Oklahoma City. So we'll look at site readiness, what the plan, OKC, can do, what the Economic Development Trust could do, and what other partners can do. Challenges that we've had, these, this is the premise of what the consultants looked at, the difficulties that we have based on information that we've had from the Chamber of Commerce and our experience in rezoning applications that affect industrial land. It appears as though we have a lot of land in Oklahoma City. We have 621 square miles. The issue is not so much the quality of land, but the amount of land that is development-ready, so if you want to say shovel-ready. We don't have an adequate supply in that respect. I think we've suffered somewhat from the abundance of land and have not recognized that the type of land that is serviced close to infrastructure, close to other employment areas, the kinds of land that developers who are coming into Oklahoma City need in order to be able to make that investment in Oklahoma City. Looks like we're there. So the issues that they've had, that we looked at, are partialization. We might, in looking at their photograph, identify some fairly large vacant areas of land. When you overlay the property ownership there, you find out that there are multiple owners. That makes it very difficult to aggregate large enough pieces of property to be able to support these developers when they come to town. And the issue is largely derived around sites that are more than 100 acres. This is where the Chamber of Commerce is finding difficulty in being able to identify sufficient properties to meet those diverse market demands. Inadequate infrastructure, we have land that is designated within the comprehensive plan for future industrial. Problem is that we don't have infrastructure provided to that area yet. Another issue we have is when we do provide infrastructure to land that's owned industrial, it's difficult for property owners, private property owners, to have the patience to be able to hold on to that property for long enough to be able to attract the right employer. And we cannot fault them for that, but it is a difficulty. It's a very large holding cost for any individual property owner to be able to hold that, and when a bird in the hand comes along, it's very difficult for them to resist that opportunity to be able to redevelop that for some other purpose. And so we've found we've got a history of conversion of these industrial lands to non-employment uses. Industrial lands, like agricultural lands, are considered in a holding pattern and that there is a higher and better use. But industrial lands are essential for our capacity to be able to support those, the employment in the future. So I'm going to go through a couple of examples here of where that encroachment issue has affected us directly. This is the New Western Heights School at Southwest 15th and Council Road. This was a piece of property that was donated to the Western Heights School District by the old Dayton Tire Facility. It's located in that darker area, the dark blue area there is I-3. It's not exactly, in my mind, the ideal location for a school, but the school was determined to go ahead with this location. They said that they wouldn't have an issue with into I-3 uses locating adjacent to them. That's not so much the issue. The issue for the chamber is when they bring somebody into town who's looking for a large industrial area, they look for proximity. So they look at anybody who might cause them concern in the future, whether that be residential or a school. They believe that if they were to develop a semi-noxious use in that area, that they would have to deal with those complaints forevermore. So they don't want to look at a site within, depending on what the industry is, within half-- depending on what the industry is, within half a mile of, of such a facility. So, in effect, while you only take out, say, 50 to 70 acres for a site like this, you're actually impacting a much larger area and significantly reducing the capacity of that to develop for its full optimal potential for industrial uses. Another site, south of, of the airport, this has been designated industrial for a long period of time. Had water and sewer. A housing developer took advantage of that, came in with Williamson Farms Development, I think this was approved in 2004, 2005, developed almost a, a full section of land for residential. Again, the same issue. It's right in the middle, smack dab in the middle of a very large area that would have been highly suitable for industrial development. This is an area over near Tinker. We've just met with Tinker Air Force Base representatives this week. They're concerned about encroachment. This particular area here, between Southeast 7th and I-240, the argument was made that this was not large enough for industrial development, which is quite, quite possibly true. The issue again is who wants to locate adjacent to that, and then Tinker has concerns about its proximity to their facility. Another development that has not come before you yet, but is an app that we are aware of, this is the only site within the central city that is still large enough to attract a large employer. It's down on General Pershing, near the fairgrounds. It has rail access. It's an ideal site in, in the inner city, but because it's relatively cheap, we have a local healthcare facility that wants to locate there, which would, of course, severely diminish potential for industrial development in its vicinity. So, the scope was really getting an understanding. We've been operating off a sort of anecdotal information about the difficulties of, of having sufficient land. We wanted to get an accurate assessment of what the situation was. So, the consultants were tasked with evaluating exactly what the situation is out there, what our needs are, and then making a recommendation that would be captured, captured within an action plan to identify how, how we need to move forward. So, in terms of site needs, what they focused on were, were areas larger than 100 acres. They looked at the respective roles for the public sector and the private sector, as I mentioned before. There are, there are obviously limitations on the private sector's capacity to be able to, to hang on to these large properties. Looked at our infrastructure, existing provision, what we may have planned for expansion, and then made recommendations that we can capture within the comprehensive plan going forward. Looked at what the different industrial sector needs are, based on national industry standards, so how much land, what's the likelihood of land demand for high-tech versus heavy industrial versus manufacturing, et cetera. But the key issue that they identified, they did not think that the current policies are adequate for ensuring an adequate supply of land of sufficient size, 100 acres plus. They recognize that our needs are not uniform. There are compatibility issues with some of these. You're not going to locate high-tech next to, to heavy industrial, but some of these could, could be located together, high-tech and, and office, for example, and heavy industrial, and manufacturing, and warehousing. So, there's an opportunity for some synergy between these different sectors. In terms of demand, we've basically been absorbing approximately 80 acres a year. That's 90, 80 acres every year. It's an average. So, in any one year, we could, we could be absorbing zero. In another year, we could have several hundred acres, depending on how the market is, how the economy is working, how the market is, and how we compete with, and we're obviously always competing with other cities. There is an argument in their mind that absorption has been lower than it possibly could have been because of this deficiency in large development-ready sites. And Michael Logan, who was here with, with the chamber, will be happy to talk to that later on. So, in terms of identifying the needs for how we move forward, they are recommending that we need at least two to three options for those different sectors, and, and, and located in different parts of the city. You're trying to meet that variability in the, in the general market. People like to locate in different areas. They all have different criteria that they look for. So, you want to be able to provide as many of those options as possible to be able to meet that need. Based on that equation of, of a couple of different options for a couple of different sectors, and dispersed around the city, they believe, they're recommending that we would be in good shape if we had about 1,000 acres. That would meet the demand. There'd be a couple of different options for all those different sectors. I don't believe that we have that 1,000 acres at this point in time. That's what they're recommending.
All right. Russell, thanks.
No, I'm not finished yet.
Okay, I'm done.
You flipped through it too quickly, man. Just in terms of their, their analysis, in terms of, of evaluating demand, you see this map before you. The, the orange and red areas, they're Phase 1 level of analysis. These are parcels within the city that have, may have potential because they're vacant or they're approximate to highways and other infrastructure, may have potential for development. They then went through a, a Phase 2 analysis where they did further analysis, looking at that, that, once we got the information in on infrastructure, et cetera, looked at what the upgrade cost, took the city from its total acreage of about 400,000 acres down to roughly 6,800 acres, and the net value there is about 6,300 acres. They divided that larger area into 14 study areas, where you're aggregating land and large enough parcels with all those other adjacencies that they consider were worthy of additional study for identifying land that we would need to provide greater protection for in the future. So, these are the study areas. You see, there's a relatively general distribution around the city, concentration up in the northwest, northeast, out largely west of the, west and south of the airport, and then one parcel over there on the southeast corner. Looking at those total infrastructure costs for each of these parcels, looking at the study area there on, on the left, four of the, three of those, four parcels there identify as the higher priority areas. Also follow over to the next in terms of cost per acre, which I think is the more telling figure. But the lowest cost, was that Site 16, 80 acres available there? That's the lowest cost, and that still figures into the cost per acre, which is why that has been attractive, I think, for an alternative use. It has good proximity, good access, et cetera. So, that's why that site is attractive. So, these are the four study areas that they felt have the highest potential in the short term. Two up in the northeast sector, Site 16 in the center city, and then 5B out near just northwest of the airport.
Russell, what is Site 16? Where, is that the General Pershing site?
That is on General Pershing. That's that area cleared on the north side, just before you get to the fairgrounds. It's been, it's been vacant for quite a while, and obviously, I, I, I think it's been difficult for that property owner to be able to hang on to. Hasn't, hasn't had the right potential user come forward.
Thank you.
So, these are the issues that I've talked about before, and the same, same things in terms of infrastructure costs, what, meeting a variable market, parcelization and the ownership of the properties is a concern. We may want to look at different policies going forward about trying to direct these different users to different sectors of the city, based on the cost. So, if there's a, there's a heavy use of, of water and sewer, they might want to go to the northeast or the southeast quadrant. Relatively light demands might want to go to the southwest quadrant. Also looking at trends. So, if you look at the northwest sector, Area 10, which is one of the most expensive sites, that area's been developing for residential and office. So, it seems unlikely that's going to go for a heavy industrial use. May go to a memorial office or a business park. They chose seven study areas here, and you can see that there are still, there are still difficulties going forward. Study Areas 2 and 5B are actually school land sites. That's why they have a single ownership. But those sites are still not easy sites. Site 2, for example, has more than 230 different easements running across it. So, it's not going to be an easy site to make development ready. But it does have one ownership, so that's in its favor. You look at some of those other ones there, Site 14, for example, may rank relatively low in terms of cost per acre, ranks fourth there, but it has 34 different owners. So, that's going to be difficult to assemble. So, even these areas, which they're identifying as having the highest potential, still have a lot of constraints, a lot of challenges to be able to make them development-ready. Their recommendations, there's a public sector role here. We're obviously, the information that's coming out of this report, we're going to incorporate into the comprehensive plan. But there are other potential users of the information here, the Chamber of Commerce, the Economic Development Trust, et cetera, also going to be looking at this information as to what steps we need to take going forward. Real-time infrastructure, future infrastructure, expansion into the comprehensive plan. There's a, there's an opportunity here, I think, to, to tie the CIP with the plan, so that we're efficient and effective going forward. And there may be things that we need to look at if we provide infrastructure in support of industrial development, that there has to be a quid pro quo, that that land has to be retained for industrial development, particularly if the, if the significant investment on our part to be able to support that. And then, we did look at that long-term ownership role. Who is, who's in the best position to do that? If you look at the history of Oklahoma City, you know, the private sector has been limited in its capacity to hold on to these large pieces, but we've had other, other endeavors of assembling large chunks of land, whether it be the airport or Tinker or GM. Those have been successful endeavors in the past. So, we may need to go sort of back to the past to be able to look at how to facilitate that. Plan OKC, I talked about some of the things that we can do there. Other, other things that we can do in terms of buffering these areas as well. We could look at design standards that are going to, that, that could reduce the, the conflict between different uses. There's a number of different ways that we can help with this. But in terms of the, the large assembly piece, I think there's a role there perhaps for the Economic Development Trust to consider in land acquisition, in identifying areas that we want to prioritize for the provision of infrastructure, and the development of partnerships. We have a number of partnerships that are all working extremely well so far, between us and the chamber, and the Alliance, and the Economic Development Trust. But there are other partnerships that we may want to look at more aggressively pursuing, such as with school lands, for example. And then, over the next several months, we'll be looking at putting together an implementation plan that is going to articulate this precise actions that we're going to need to take to be able to respond to the information, the recommendations coming out of this plan. And then, Plan OKC, which we expect to, to wrap up in, in 2013. So, those are, that's essentially where we're going from, from here. I'd be happy to entertain any questions. And Mike Logan, I think, can talk to you about some of the difficulties that the chamber has had with providing adequate site options for these employers coming to Oklahoma City or evaluating Oklahoma City, and what that has meant for us in terms of potentially lost employers.
Questions for Russell?
You mentioned several times, school land. What is the biggest challenge in reference to land owned by schools?
Well, they have to, they have to put it out for bid. Obviously, we don't have control of what happens with that, with the outcome of that. And there's never been a body, or a public body that's supporting economic development that's in a position to pursue such a bid. So, that would be one of the things that we would need to look at going forward, as to if that land is, if we identify that land as a good candidate for large employment sites, then we'd have to develop one, the relationship with school lands, but then identify through the bid process what we're willing to, or what, whoever that agency was, what they would be willing to do to secure that land. As I said, it's not free and clear land. It has constraints on it. In its current condition, I don't know that that land, at least Site 2, is, is amenable to anybody going forward.
All right. Any other questions for Russell?
Mike, did you want to say?
Michael Logan, Director of Business Development at the Oklahoma City Chamber. I just wanted to reinforce some of the comments that Russell made prior about the lack of shovel-ready land. Generally, we've found when companies or consultants come to us, they're looking for things that have the lowest risk potential for, for the development. And if we don't have water, sewer, roads in place for those, even if they can be provided in a relatively short period of time, that's a risk most companies don't want to assume because they can go down the street and find a site that has all those in place, and they don't have that potential risk to deal with. Many of the parcels in the city would make good development sites if they had that infrastructure. The development community in Oklahoma City doesn't do much in the way of speculative development. So, there's a bit of a hole in the market here. In other communities, the city may be a little more proactive in providing sewer and water services in anticipation of development. That's not the history in Oklahoma City. We tend to follow it as opposed to lead it. And so, if the city doesn't lead and the development community doesn't develop it on a speculative basis, we basically don't have an inventory available once the existing service land is gone until the next increment of sewer-water extension takes place as a result of a bond measure or some other decision. So, it's an issue that creates difficulties in terms of having essentially bread on the shelf for the next consumer that comes in the store to choose among. I'd be happy to answer any specific questions if there are any. I think Russell's presentation and the study that was done covers things pretty well. It's not an inexpensive set of solutions.
Right.
I've had the opportunity in the last three or four years to have dealt with three of the sites we're talking about. Site 2, and the one that's immediately east of Tinker, across Douglas, a mile or so, and then one south of, of, of Tinker. And one of the problems that, that I've seen is that the, we've almost set ourselves up for, for the encroachment. I mean, I, we permitted, for example, south of Site 2, it's all residential. And it was built residential at a time when it was zoned residential across the street north. Then, we come back after the people have, are in residential housing, south of 89th Street, and, and, and want to rezone it industrial. And now, they're saying, well, I did everything I was supposed to do. I looked at what the zoning was around me, and it wasn't industrial. Now, you want to come back and zone it industrial. We've got, it seems to me, we need to get much more aggressive about how we do that. And because we end up putting an I-1 strip across the south edge of, of, of that, of Site 2, just because it seemed only, only fair to the people that already lived in, in residential housing immediately to the south of that. And the question, I-2, of Site 2, for example, we talk about all the easements. Most of those are abandoned oilfield easements. The school land trust is never going to do that. They're, I mean, in my view is, they're not going to be aggressive enough to do it. That, that's a site that would make sense, it would seem to me, for the city to try to acquire ownership, clean it up. It's, it's only revenue now that's being produced is a grazing lease, who, the guy continually loses cattle because plastic bags blow into his grazing lease, and the cows die eating plastic bags, and that's another problem that we deal with. But we, it seemed to me, we could be much more, and I can go into detail with each one of the three that I've had to deal with in the last three or four years. Every one of them, I think, are, the problem arises from the lack of a plan, or the assertion of that there is a plan when no one could have possibly ever seen it, or know what it is, or it's a decision been made somewhere else besides on the ground at that location.
I wouldn't disagree with you.
And all three times, there's been, the, the solution has not been satisfactory, really, for, for, it didn't satisfy me, it didn't satisfy the owners of the property around it. But it was really the only equitable solutions that I could figure out, that I could vote for. But I think we've got to get out in front of it. We need to start, we need a, a system... We need to start, we need a system or a policy that puts us out in front of that so that we don't have these contests between well-intentioned individuals who feel like they're suffering because we haven't made a plan.
I'd agree with that, Councilman. I don't think the, you know, the current comprehensive plan has been strong enough in providing those protections, and there is that confusion out there in the general community that between zoning and the comprehensive plan. So the comprehensive plan is going to need to articulate stronger protections in order to be able to accomplish that, so that the Planning Commission and the City Council have a higher comfort level in being able to make these kind of decisions.
I would agree.
All right, thank you. Mike Knapp is here to do a presentation on the Boathouse District Master Plan.
Okay, well, hello, everyone. My name's Mike Knapp. I'm the Executive Director of the Oklahoma City Boathouse Foundation. What a historic day for our city, and it's exciting I get to be here today to talk to you about the river, and really, I think, is the river being a reflection on the kind of momentum we're all enjoying here. And as we get into this plan, this is an update of a plan that has been ongoing that the Boathouse Foundation has commissioned, and has been working with the Oklahoma City Riverfront Redevelopment Authority on. I think it's important to understand the context in that, you know, boy, you know, I tell everyone who comes in from out of town that ten years ago, it really was a ditch, and, or, you know, we did mow it ten years ago. And just to understand why we're doing all of the components as we get into, that we are, in just the last three months, you know, this is just the last three months, we've had an Olympic Trials, we've sent four, well, actually, six people on their way to the London Olympics. I just received an email yesterday that a young lady through one of our outreach programs never thought she would ever row, started rowing. And we have a, it's part of what we do, have a for-youth program that goes into many urban schools, and she just got a scholarship to row at OU. So things are really kind of going full circle, and this is, you know, really, really exciting. And then everything from the events with the drag boat racing last weekend, before that, we had the Central Youth Championship, the Big Twelve Championship, the Olympic Trials, and the Dead Center Film Festival was here just last weekend. So a lot of exciting things going on, and this is the site planned pursuant to this revised master plan. Of course, I'm sure everyone is familiar with the Chesapeake Boathouse off on the left, on the west end of the plan, and then the Chesapeake Finish Line Tower, Devon Boathouse, and then that is where we start with the new projects, leading into a combination of what will be privately funded projects through some, many different contributors to the publicly-funded projects, which are MAPS III projects. Again, we're trying to create one of the world's premier urban destinations for river sports, community wellness, and adventure. We've kind of a thing, we believe in the Boathouse District that we, you know, having people at the river having fun is a great way to get them fit. And so everything that we do has a, is really a fun element, and you see these additional high-adventure elements that are all focused on being active, are going to further complement what is already down there. Looking again to the east, you see the buildings, as I just described, and we'll go through each one of these very quickly here in just a moment. And our different partners, of course, USA Canoe Kayak is now relocated to Oklahoma City, we're home to the US Rowing Adaptive Paralympic Program and their lightweight program. In fact, we had a group of Navy SEALs through the Wounded Warrior Program training here last week, so it's very exciting. And then our university partners as well. A lot of this is about defining the Boathouse District as a premier attraction for Oklahoma City. We've got incredible, world-class facilities, you know, in the Olympic sports world, people really look at Oklahoma City as a big league in Olympic sports circles. And in fact, next week, we're hosting the Olympic Training Site Conference, where all of the Olympic training sites from around the country are coming here to learn about what we've done. And so, and we want to really make sure that we share that with the entire community, that every, you know, we have a program called River Sport Adventures, really starting it with Saturdays, but you can come out any day of the week, get on the water, get on a bike, get in one of the programs. And this is really something to start to really define, this is a place you can bring your family and spend the day at. It includes everything from learning to row, dragon boating, paddle boats, we have tours, kayak lessons, stand-up paddleboard, all these, these are really active and healthy activities that we just really want to introduce to the community in a very accessible way. And that's kind of what, we have two different locations, of course, the Boathouse District. And I did put up there, just to make sure everyone is aware, that the Route 66 Boathouse is really where things began, you know, years ago, but we have redeveloped that, and so we have a parallel program there, really emphasizing the Wildlife Refuge, the Preserve, the Stinchcomb Wildlife Preserve, and having a host of programs out there. This attraction concept really is very present in the design of the Sandridge Youth Pavilion. I mentioned the growth of our, alluded to our youth programs and the kind of results it's leading to for our young men and women in our city. And we have a tremendous amount of new programs and kids going through our programs that we really needed more space. The Sandridge, Sandridge has been a great partner with our youth outreach programs. The Youth Pavilion will provide a lot of space for gathering for all of these programs, but also additional attractions that are open for everyone to come down and get involved. And it's about fourteen thousand square feet. It's really different. Every boathouse or facility in the Boathouse District has a unique theme, or they may look, they complement each other in design, but they're also very distinct. This one will be all glass, it will be very open, in some ways, kind of like an expo center, so we can have big events inside, it can be the center of activity at our big events on the river, and, but it is about the same size as the footprint of the Devon Boathouse, just one floor. And this is a top-down, removing the top from the pavilion, you can see, looking into it, a lot of open space around what is in the center, and in the center is a surfing facility, indoor surf park. And I'm sure you've heard this, or read about this in the past, but this is something that, as we look for additional complementary things to add to the Boathouse District, you know, surfing is an element that is obviously missing in Oklahoma. And why not, if people thought rowing was crazy ten years ago, why not surfing? And it is a sport, and it's something kids can get involved in, but also adults. And so that's incorporated into the mix, and there'll be competitions here, and it'll be a circuit, and you can see on that plan how that fits in. Some images of what that looks like, translucent roof, so you can look above, and there'll be people zipping over the top on the zip line, and then how that can be meeting space, it can be expo space, all kinds of different things can go into that, in that facility. It also features the Sandridge Youth Pavilion, the Sky Trail Ropes Course, that's the big, the tall triangular structure you see there. What that essentially is, is a ropes course, a bit, it's a steel structure, it's a very modern version of a ropes course. It's very safe, you're belayed in from the bottom, and you never unhook as you go through this series of features that are very exciting. It'd be actually the tallest in the world as a, as a, as a Sky Trail, so it's going to be very exciting to get that up. And the goal will be to get to the top and go through a lot of different adventure elements trying to get there. And then here's a brand-new plan, we are, this is the first phase of the Sandridge Youth Pavilion, is to get this complete, so we're working on the exact, the engineering of it. Pretty complex when you look at, look at it up close, but essentially, there's a rail that goes all the way through it, you go through different features. What you see on the, to the right, is a miniature version for kids, for like five-year-olds, something that kids can go in, they can be harnessed up, they can feel like the older kids what they're doing, or Mom and Dad, but it's very safe, it's all safe, but this is very, they're low to the ground, so they're not quite as, not quite as intimidating. And then there's a mini zip, it's called a zip track, that connects that with the Sky Trail, so you get that zip line experience. It's a brand-new type of technology. And then this is, looking over the top, the river-crossing zip line. You know, of course, we're building a whitewater center, which we're all very excited about, adding a high-adventure element to the city. As we start to continue to define our outdoor culture and adding these types of amenities, this is very unique to have a seven-hundred-foot zip line in an urban area near downtown, and the world's tallest ropes course, essentially a Sky Trail ropes course, and whitewater. So as we look to really appeal to the outdoor enthusiasts and really define our outdoor culture, these are going to go a long ways to enhancing that. And you can see the tower on the South Bank, it'll zip across from the Sky Trail, across to the tower, and then back, and that's the view from the top. It's going to be pretty exciting to zip over the top of the Sandridge Youth Pavilion, and then you'll end up at the South Bank Tower, you'll go through another series of features, it'll be a secondary Sky Trail, and then you'll go back. So you'll come across, you'll enter in the lower part, you'll climb up and go across from the top back to the Youth Pavilion. And that's what it looks like in full. You can see the little people on that line to give you a sense of scale, you know, so I'm sure everyone here will join us on the first day, their harnesses on, ready to go. So, the Blue Zone. This is presented by Blue Cross Blue Shield. Obviously, they're a big partner of ours, as we really try to impact health and wellness initiatives in Oklahoma City. And they are, we're looking for a signature project in Oklahoma, this is actually the biggest project they've ever done, and this will be what we call the Blue Zone. Very focused features in what this is, enhanced playground, it's all about getting kids active in a very fun way, and it complements what we're already doing with the Sandridge Youth Pavilion. There'll be a junior zip line, you know, where you, you know, it's low to the ground, no harnesses, a big bouncing area that you, you know, you're going to get very active, burn a lot of calories doing that, an electronic feature that you run around and you hit buttons, it's called the Neos 360, and then the junior Sky Trail, which you see. Plus, they're going to put a large cover over the existing Kaboom Playground that we built last November to provide shade out there. Next up on the plan is signage and wayfinding, you know, that's something that is missing out there, is we have the hundred thousand cars that pass by the Boathouse District on I-40, they probably wonder what those, those modern-looking buildings are, and we feel like we need to define that. And so we've come up with different ways to do that as in-concept, and additional adding other signage in the Boathouse District. The Compass Rose Structure Sculpture, this is coming into a turnaround area near our parking lot and near the Sandridge Youth Pavilion, presented, it's sponsored by Innis Much Foundation, hopefully that'll be in by early fall. Mountain biking, this has been a part of the plan for a while, in that we have a lot of cyclists that are discovering it's very safe to ride in the boat, along the river, there's no major street crossings, and to add mountain biking and a very high-adventure mountain bike area, it's a pump track, and there's really not many around this area, and essentially puts some exciting features into a small area and gives you a mountain biking experience.
What is a pump track?
Essentially, it's like, Mayor, it's kind of like a BMX track, but it's more for very accessible, you're going over rollers with your bike, the goal is to really not pedal, you're using your momentum to go through this whole series of features. It helps develop skills, your mountain biking skills. And then we also do believe at the top of that picture, or that rendering, is eventually having some BMX component, which bicycles, not motorbikes, but just as that is, it adds another complementary feature to, and BMX is an Olympic sport, and currently looking for other places to train. And then the gateway signage at Lincoln and Reno, so we can start to direct people and define the Boathouse District. We do need additional storage and repairs, so we've included it on the, on the plan. Currently, we have an off-site location, this is actually in the I-35 Canal, so it's accessible by the water. Flatwater slalom course, I just mentioned this, we're all going to learn, or you're all going to learn more about whitewater in the coming couple of years. Slalom is one feature of that, and learning how to slalom is important, and in fact, all the whitewater courses that are built typically have a flatwater component, and we have plenty of flatwater now, so we, we're proposing adding a slalom course. The Boathouse Development, UCO, is currently very close to being complete, wrapping their project up and announcing a timeline, but we are very pleased with their progress. You can see it there, of course, to review. It will have a, it will have a music venue. Let me start with OU, then we'll go back to UCO. OU is moving ahead, they are funded, I do not have an exact timeline as of yet, but you can see their plan. It will have, of course, the training facilities, meeting space, alumni space, and then the University of Central Oklahoma will feature the music venue, kind of a jazz lab, or a place that the students from the ACM can perform, adds another interesting dynamic to the river, and then an art gallery, along with boats, to make it a boathouse for their varsity rowing program.
We expect that, so stop right here. All that, that you've got planned and going on-
Yes.
-is not MAPS III.
That's correct.
That is all things that you're doing with your foundation and-
Correct.
... private partners that you've got going on, and so that's just, that alone is amazing. Now, you add the MAPS III thing on top of that.
So with MAPS III, this is really going to be a game changer in terms of how we define our outdoor amenities and culture in Oklahoma City with, of course, the whitewater, but I want to mention the river lighting. This is an area that we're currently working on as a MAPS III Subcommittee. It's something we anticipate getting, moving as the first project. That has defined Oklahoma City from a, in the rowing world, as being the place that does night racing. It's been, internationally, the timing of it was interesting in that this very traditional old sport was ready for a change. We came in at the right time and presented this new idea. Now it's been, internationally, people are very excited about it. We're going to see a lot of things come as a result of this, not to mention other events. We could have done drag boat racing under the lights last weekend, for example. And then with the windscreen, again, to protect the quality of the course and the venue. And then, of course, the whitewater center, which will be a major part of MAPS III at the river, fully pumped facility. This is just one concept, we're currently going to be going through a selection process for the engineering and design firm that will take this on, but this is the recommended location, and, you know, there'll be multiple channels, it'll be dialed up or dialed down depending on skill level, but it is for the families, for everyone. You know, there was an article in the paper in Colorado Springs a few months ago about seniors dragon boating, I mean, dragon boating, dragon boating, but also whitewater rafting. So truly something for everyone, and that's what's unique about this, is you can have the Olympic Trials or a World Cup, but then you can also have any, you know, families go down in rafts. And then there's another view of how that nestles into the area. And then we also, a couple of things to point out here, we've also planned in the design of the Sandridge Youth Pavilion and the Sky Trail, to accept a zip line to go east into the whitewater center and then across the river, so then you end up what's equivalent to like a canopy tour, going around the venue and over the whitewater.
Mike, how far east is the planned whitewater development?
Just as far east as you can go to I-35, yes. We would like to see going further east with the trail connection, which is part of a different plan to connect the trails to the Katy Trail, and that's a separate issue, but the American Indian Cultural Center site, getting through there and making some of those connections, I think will be important. The Phase Two for MAPS III is also underway. That includes some things that may not, that require a little explanation, but the pneumatic starting system, which is what you see there, that's the starting gates that make us, you know, truly stand out as a world-class venue. We had one in place for the Olympic Trials, very well-received. There'll be additional racecourse improvements, aesthetic lighting, and other amenities that will come through Phase Two. I want to mention connectivity and parking, because as we do this plan, it's important to understand, how are people going to get here and where are they going to park? Because, you know, as we have these big events, it always is a question. But you can see the key element that's going to happen in the next year is the connection to the Brooktown Entertainment District with the tunnel underneath Interstate 40. We're very excited to have that complete, because we have been a little bit of an island away from everything, even though we're close, it's just the connection has been difficult. away from everything, even though we're close, it's just the connection has been difficult. Of course, the new, the new bridge that crossed, that opened up last November has been a tremendous improvement. It's the new Lincoln Bridge. But then the canal tunnel and the walkway under the, you know, you can take a boat to the end of the Bricktown Canal, get out of a boat, and get in a river cruiser, or walk into the boathouse district. That'll open up a lot of opportunities. You can see that by the two red lines. And then vehicular access and parking, that will continue to improve. You can see the yellow dashed area is a, is a ramp in from the Boulevard, which will really improve access once that is complete. And then the new entry with the new Lincoln Bridge is also depicted there. Parking, you've got to consider parking for two different things. Number one, daily use, which is really pretty adequate right now. It will have to be increased as these additional boathouses and whitewater is open. And then the events, which we use overflow areas anyway, and there are lots of different places to do that. We have purchased a tram within the boathouse district, so we can move people around, kind of, I don't know, a little like Six Flags or somewhere during these, during these big events. But that's something that we want to really emphasize it. We're staying on top of the parking issue. We've had construction issues, but I think it will get better. And then the connection into Bricktown will really improve things. And then recent development, this is brand-new. I wanted to show you the starting gates in action. This is from the Olympic Trials, looking at the top picture, right as the gates drop. And so, you know, when you're talking about a 200-meter race, it's a brand-new race for the Olympics, the start makes or breaks the race. Do not have that, you know, I mean, truly, we had a finish that was so close, you barely could see, and sent a young man to the Olympics as a result of having a fair race here. So, and then also below, balancing this high-end elite side of things with the energy outdoor fitness area, this is just being installed. This is a, kind of a component of our Blue Cross project. This is actually, though, by the Chesapeake Boathouse. It's a new type of outdoor fitness area. You actually take your smartphone up, you scan it, and then it gives you a workout on your phone, video and everything, and it shows you how to do the exercise and gives you a workout, and you go through the different stations. Of course, this is free to the public and just recently was complete. Also complete is this new scoreboard. You see at the, at the top there, we've got the, from the Big 12 Championship, it was put in action. It can actually do some video, which is, is really great. And then movie projector kiosk, which is the bottom left, is just, just now been complete. We did test a part of it, unfortunately, it was raining during the Dead Center Film Festival, but we, it works. And so, it projects images in two directions at the Finish Line Tower and the Devon Boathouse. So, you have this really neat place to come out and watch a movie. And we're going to start that in a week from Saturday with a family movie, a family movie night on a Saturday, it's the 22nd, showing A Dolphin Tale. So, tried to find something that seemed to make a connection. So, we, but it'll be a great thing, we'll use all throughout the year for different events. And then it's also got a slot aiming towards the river for the very, those times when we want to project images onto the river and have, literally, you could be in a boat watching a movie, so. And then boathouse district management, the foundation is very active, you know, in managing the district, is kind of the umbrella entity to make sure there's communication, coordination, safety. You know, we're, we have hundreds of people on the water every day, and so, we provide that oversight. We're going to continue, we're going to formalize that in a management plan as we get more defined and sophisticated down there, that's becoming very important. So, the big events that come here, we help coordinate what goes on and where you can take your boats and, you know, it's, the river's for everyone, but there are certain times when, you know, you'll have a dragboat event and you don't want, you know, people in their canoe, you know, crossing the river when boats are going 200 miles an hour. So, there's things that, like that, that we will manage. And then you can see this diagram and how that, that works. And the current management zone is, is proposed, and the future management zone. And if there's any way to sort of define, put this into, it's kind of like managing an arena in some ways, except we've got the river, and the river's sort of like a sports venue and arena. And so, it's not, it's not restricting anyone from access, it's just making sure it's well-managed. So, and then finally, I just want to close, the Olympics is coming up. We are, the only river in the country is an Olympic Training Site. We have athletes, we're very proud, just earned their trip to the Olympics. At least six athletes from Oklahoma City now, probably more, and Paralympians are going to be there. So, very, everyone's very excited about how far we've come in a short period of time from the Olympic side of things. And then, of course, we balance all of that. What's so unique about Oklahoma City is how it's balanced with the community and the youth programs, and how they, they both work together to inspire one another. So, with that, I thank you for your time, and here for any questions, and really appreciate all the support through the years.
There's so much amazing, I mean, just wonderful presentation, and so much to be excited about. I love that last slide with the youth there, so many people are excited about it. I wouldn't know where to begin. Can, can you address, just, there was an article in The Oklahoman about the quality of water, and maybe it, I just want to, what I took from that article is that there were some concerns, both in a swimming event, and then I guess a recent athletic event that was canceled because of the amount of E. coli-
Yeah.
... in the water, but that, but that's not always the case, that it has to do with what, it's right after a rain, and so, the levels go up and down.
There's risk any time you get into a public water, as you know, there's no, there isn't anything that's real safe, because there's always the opportunity there, and it comes from many sources. It can come from the urban runoff, it comes from, you know, wildlife, you know, there are, you know, even, it's a large basin, there's, you know, there's agricultural uses in, to the west, although there hasn't been documented that it comes from agricultural uses. But obviously, it's pollution does come from that. And so, we set up a very scientific-based process after a triathlon a couple of years ago. We worked with the Department of Health, the Water Resources Board, DEQ, City County Health, our own staff on this, to come up with some criteria as when is it, when, when should we have events in the river? And, and, and there's, I think, three different levels that we came up with. And so, one, it's, it's okay, one is, it's okay, but you're warned that be careful with it, and one, it's really not safe, and we probably shouldn't have the event. And for a short period of time after some rainfalls, it fell into that third category, we can before last.
And I think it's important to, to put it into perspective. We're, I've become, I won't say an expert, I've learned much more about this than I ever thought I would, but in the last couple of years, you know, as we really study our river and get to understand it, and it, it's important to note that at least 80 to 85% of the time, the river is perfectly fine to swim in, like, we're well below the standards. And although we don't allow swimming, it would be fine, you're not going to get sick if you fell in. And as I've learned and studied other cities, our issues with regard to urban, our water quality and our urban venue are very similar. I mean, it's just runoff, and, and I think we always want to look for ways to mitigate that in the future, but it's not, we're not unique, the river's totally safe to come and utilize. And the great thing now is we have a standard, so we know if it's a red, it's a red category, that we're just not going to, we're not going to take the risk. But I also want to say, in the last week, USA Triathlon, you know, that, they were the ones that came in and had this event. They are eager to come back, you know, they want to bring their biggest event to Oklahoma City. We're a little, you know, we're, it's, after that first experience, I mean, it causes you a little pause, but, you know, we've come to understand that our issues are no different than Washington DC, or, or the Chicago River, or the Hudson River where they have these events. It's just got to be managed, so.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Any other comments? Yes, David?
Well, speaking of that issue, I would like to see us explore additional ordinances that would take a much more aggressive stance against any business or even individual that does contribute to the pollution of the river. And, you know, there's been reports that, especially in instances where they're trying to operate their own sewer system or lagoon, that sometimes those areas can spill into the river. So, I would make, I would like to see us make a much more aggressive stance against any type of pollution, and even going beyond that and having members of the city staff go even beyond the city's limits and explore instances beyond the city limits to where pollution may be coming into the river. I'm just not sure how much the state or federal agencies are as interested in this as, say, I am. So, one, I just think, one, we could look at becoming much more aggressive on ordinances that would address the issue of polluting the river. And then, secondly, going beyond just our city limits and looking at areas upstream and kind of being the watchdog for a larger portion of the river.
Has anybody ever chlorinated a river?
Say that again.
Has anybody ever chlorinated a river?
Can't chlorinate the river, that would eat, kill the fish. Kill wildlife, can't, can't do that.
If it kills the fish, it'd probably kill the swimmers too, but is there some balance point in there where you could treat the river?
Uh, that, that, we're into some, the short answer is no.
You know, it would only have to be in effect for a relatively short period of time, according to what Mike said, but it, I think we ought to look into.
That's McKee.
Yes. And this may be to the manager, Mike. As it relates to, to the bacteria that when it's elevated, two weeks ago, they had one of the events on the river that they had to, at the last minute, make some-
The wakeboarding, the wakeboarding event.
Wakeboard. Does the eleva, do the elevations affect all activities on the river? In other words, there-
It's only body contact.
Huh?
Only body contact, so only if you're in the river.
It's only if you're in the river. So, if you had any other of the activities that like the, the zip line and all of that-
Oh, no, 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 or, or, you know, rowing or canoeing or anything where you're not in the river, those are, continue to go on.
And we would have the same concerns as it relates to the, the whitewater development? Or what do we do?
No, this, this time, it's still going to be engineered, but the, I think, the leading theory is that it will be self-contained and be a separate water source.
Really, the only times where we have participants in the water are for the water portion of triathlon events or for the wakeboarding events. Is that right, Mike? I couldn't think of anything else.
Any other comments from the council? Seeing then, Mike, thank you very much for your presentation as usual. Keep up the good work, sir.
Thank you.
City manager, anything else?
No, executive session.
All right. Do we have any citizens who want to be heard?
Thank you, Your Honor. My name is Michael Hinton, 1729 Northwest Third Street, Oklahoma City, Oklahoma 73106. Now, make this brief as possible. Of course, I did to come and speak earlier this morning regarding transit, and I would just like to share with all of you that I am most pleased to be here to hear this and the discussion being made regarding transit. I've been an avid supporter of the transit system now going on 16 years, seen a lot of things come and go, and having served on the committee gained a lot of experience that I'd be able to share with this council in reaching a decision how we're going to go with Sunday service, as well as the Northwest Express Route. I made an appointment earlier this morning with the receptionist to meet with my council representative, Ms. Meg Salye. I have a longer list of constructive inputs that she may be able to bring forth and present to all of you, as well as myself. I'm very excited about this issue being addressed, and as I said earlier this morning, I'll be doing all my level best to jump in and start running with it. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your comments. We do have executive session, we will return.